Everybody. My name is Catherine Stock, Mayor of the City of Manzanita, and I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:08 PM. Welcome to everyone, particularly, I have to say, at this side of the room especially. And welcome to everyone who is here in person, who is here via Zoom, who is here via, what's our other method of?
YouTube.
YouTube, thank you. New to the technical term. And whether you're watching the meeting live tonight or you're having your cereal tomorrow morning and watching the replay, whatever point of time of the day it is, I wish you well. And thank you for taking the time to be here with us. I want to say a few words about the order of the meeting tonight and a little bit about housekeeping. We're going to do something different in the beginning of the meeting, which is why we have this beautiful group of people over here and a few more folks online. But we're going to proceed in basically the same fashion that we normally do, but we're going to take about a half an hour at the beginning of this meeting. And the item that we decided to call it, or what we decided to call it on the, on our agenda for tonight is simply gratitude. We all say thank you a lot in everyday life. Most of us, I'm sure, were raised to say our pleases and our thank yous about the day. But I like the word gratitude a lot better, especially as it relates to our situation here during the ice storm. Because gratitude really reflects, I think, an ongoing sense or a feeling that you have about a place, gratitude for a place, gratitude for people, gratitude for strangers who help you, gratitude for neighbors who look out for you. And during the ice storm that we experienced here recently, I think it created a lot of situations where people were able to reach out to people they knew, people were helped by people they didn't know, maybe a neighbor that they had been meaning to get to know and never had, and suddenly they had a reason to talk to each other or to even call somebody back in Portland for a second home if they saw something going wrong. And there's a lot of connections like that that keep us together in this community. But one of the things that I think you see so strongly in a small town when we have a weather event like we had is this completely fascinating and amazingly strong web of lots and lots of people and different organizations that come together. These include people that make a full-time commitment to their work, and it is in fact their job, their paid job. This may be volunteers that volunteer in the community and bring the skills they have, or they volunteer and say, hey, I don't know how to do that, and I'm going to learn. So when we have first responders at a meeting like this tonight, we have all kinds of people, and they come from, I won't steal all Dan's thunder because he will be the one telling you all these people are in detail, but it's such a range. And I think when we all get a chance to reflect on that for just a few minutes, it is just kind of amazing to know how many people are here to look out for us in addition to us looking out for each other, especially in a time of emergency. So we're here tonight to give a very special thanks and express our gratitude to our first responders, all sorts, who are here with us tonight. I want to introduce one person before I turn this over to Dan of Public Works, and that's our County Commissioner Mary Faith Bell, who is here. I want to point her out specifically. Those of you who've been around town or in the county for a while already know Mary Faith. But if you are new and you haven't had a chance to meet her yet, I'd strongly advise you to see if you can get a little of her time or see her in action. She is an amazingly committed commissioner who really cares about the people of our area and displays that deep commitment in all of her actions, which now I think include booking reservations at the state park in the absence of a position that's one of the pieces of her set of responsibilities. So the work of a county commissioner is an amazing thing, and it requires all kinds of commitment. But one of the things that Mary Faith does, and I've asked her if she would describe it in her own words, is she really is a point person and a very significant liaison within the county for emergency preparedness, emergency response. So Mary Faith, would you mind just saying a few words about that? And then we'll turn it over to Dan.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. And I'm delighted to be here to honor this group of folks. I am indeed the liaison, the commissioner liaison to the emergency management department, which is Randy. Randy's the hold department. He has a huge job. And so it's my pleasure and my honor to work with a number of these good folks. And I think that as a community, we don't often say thank you enough to the people who keep us safe and work so hard in the worst weather, under the worst circumstances. And so I'm very grateful for your service, and I'm very happy to be able to join the Manzanita City Council in thanking you. And I want to thank you for doing this because it's such a wonderful thing and so unusual. So thank you. Thank you for having this vision and inviting us tonight.
You're welcome. But I'm actually remiss in my porter because I'm going to turn it over to Linda next, who's got a few words to say.
I want to share a few words. And I just wanted to take a moment from a lot of the volunteers that you work with to express our gratitude for what you do all year long. In an emergency, you and your teams stepped up and really supported North County in a way that was amazing. I've been here a long time, and I remember the days when we, uh-oh. Get the call.
That's a bad news, Sam.
Yeah. Well, we were glad they were here. And I'm about to say something about an ambulance, and I'm glad they're gone. I remember, I've been here a long time, and I've worked with most of you. But I remember when there was no regional fire department. And with our aging demographics, it took a long time to get help. But that's not true anymore. Today, we have the Nahalem Bay Fire and Rescue. They not only fight fires, but their rapid response teams are at our home quickly and provide the medical needs that our citizens need. And I can tell you from personal experience, there is no better feeling when you've had an emergency at home than opening the door and seeing Nahalem Bay Fire and Rescue there. They are wonderful. We have a terrific emergency manager who has come in and joined the team, and he really is a one-man show. All of the responsibility falls on Randy, and he's done an exceptional job. I think what I am, there are two things I'm really pleased about, among other things. But he's been able to reach out to the municipalities, the cities, the businesses, the, anybody that has an impact on emergency preparedness, and he's brought them together. He is a strong supporter, enthusiastic supporter of volunteers. And that's really important because they're going to be kind of the ground that helps the responders. So he's done training, he's done outreach, and he's worked very closely to make this a better-prepared community. And we're really appreciative of the work you've done, Randy. Thank you. And then there's our county Public Works Director, who is probably one of the nicest guys you're ever going to meet. And I remember, I remember times where we would try to get a hold of the County Public Works, and you know, we were way off the map. And there were a lot more important things to handle than North County. But Chris has done an incredible job of working with us, being partners with us, working very closely with Dan, and really doing a wonderful job of bringing us together as a county. And we really appreciate the work you've done, Chris. Thank you so much. So Manzanita as our beloved police force. And I don't know any other city where you would put police force and beloved in the same sentence, but we do here. Always providing support, especially during an emergency. Sergeant Mike Sims provided regular text status reports to us all, which gave us a sense of what was really going on in the community. And Officer Garcia helps citizens when no one else was awake. And so I think they're just wonderful partners, and we love our police force, so thank you. And lastly, but not least, is our very own Public Works Director and Emergency Manager, Dan Weitzel, who steps up and is there all hours of the day and night, supporting our community and our region. He is an example, as are you all, of what you hope for in public employees, and just gives 10 times more than what is expected. And you've been an incredible help in Manzanita, and you've made us safe, so thank you. We really thank you all. And I think one of the things that's unique maybe to Tillamook County is just amazing how well we work together. We really do work as a team together, no matter where you are in Tillamook County. So thank you for all of the work you've done. Oh, we have PUD here. So now I have to talk about PUD. So as I said before, I've been here a long time. I remember when we used to lose power, and we'd lose it three or four times a year in the winter. And we would lose it for three or four days. And you'd try to get a hold of PUD, and you had to be very persistent to get a hold of it, very persistent. Well, today, with technology and your communication and the way you respond, I mean, you had people out at 2:00 AM in the morning fixing lines. You have really increased the ability to get us back online immediately. And I just can't tell you how proud we are to be working with you as a partner because you not only deal with our electricity and making sure that we have it, you also are an amazing community asset. You work with all of us, and you, as a business, participate with the cities and the county and the municipalities, and you help keep us safe. So thank you, PUD and Landon. We really appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hey. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Council, Mayor. This is new to me. Usually I'm on the screen. Hopefully, I'm not standing on the wrong spot. This way. Either way.
There you go.
Screen. So as Linda said, and the mayor talked about the event, what I'm going to be doing is asking our responders to give me kind of a little bit of information of what they did and introduce them, their folks that they have them here, that were key players up in the North County area. So you know, Mother Nature does have a quick way of telling us who's in charge.
Right, amen.
There's folks in here that remember some of the biggest events that happened along the coast. And I've been here, and actually, 30 years of doing firefighting because I wear multiple hats. And I've watched the progression of what, how we respond to these emergencies. So a good example, 10 years ago, in 2014, the fire department was actually fighting wildland fires up above Arch Creek, 270-foot acre wildfire. We just don't know what's going to be thrown at us. We look back into history, we see the floods of '07, and some of us still have the bad thoughts of what the flood was in '96. And so the recovery times of these type of events, you know, the flooding and stuff, used to be very large, especially for the scale of event. And a lot of us also remember there wasn't much warning. And after the event, there wasn't very much communication. So besides responding to an event, these folks are also part of the preparation, the recovery of it. So a good example is most of these folks sat in a meeting not that long after the event happened, and we do an after-action. We look at what went wrong, what went good, where can we improve, things like that. The old days, we never did that. So there's a lot of time and effort to go into these events. And so, just like I said, not just the response side of it. So I'm going to my notes here. So what I'm going to do is let's get is ask them to come up, and I'm going to start with the fire district. So I'm going to introduce Chief Knight. Chief Knight is with Nahalem Bay Fire and Rescue, and I'll let him talk a little bit about fire response and folks that were on fire.
Yeah, you got to go up there. So we have Lieutenant Leisha Mize-Ringer here. Josh Hamilton, which is also a city Public Works, which thank you for letting Public Works volunteer their time, especially during this, we'll get into that a little bit. Firefighter Cedar Brosh. Veteran firefighter Bill Cardwell, also firefighter of the year this year. And Alex back here, another Public Works, and senior firefighter. So our, what was our role? How could we start this? Our first call into this ice storm was the Nahalem Bridge. People were stranded on the Nahalem Bridge because they got on the bridge and their car just slid, and then they couldn't get going again. They just couldn't move. There wasn't really any accidents or wrecks. I wasn't on the incident, I was at the station keeping the coffee warm. I live a little further out North Fork Road, so it took me a while to get into work when that call came out. So I believe it was Josh, Dan, and who's your third?
Billy.
I didn't introduce our assistant chief, Dan Weitzel. Yeah, so those three were on the bridge incident. Three-plus hours out in that weather. They were out there so long, two lines on our fire engine froze and we got them repaired, which we didn't know at the time. Fortunately, they weren't significant to firefighting operations. They were drain tubes. But still, they came back, and there was this much ice over the whole engine. So they were out there breaking the weather, they came back, they cleaned up, and got ready for the next event. Not also a note on that, that took two ambulances. There was only one patient. The first ambulance went into the bridge, couldn't move. The second one came and met them on the other end of the bridge. Our crews were, had the experience of our community to know not to go through downtown Nahalem. They went out North Fork Road, McDonald, and came the back way to get to the wreck. So just having that experience on our department is invaluable. And these guys really do know this community upside down, backwards, in the dark, middle of the night, because that's what we have to do. I would say that was our most significant call. We did have some lines down in Manzanita from trees that were falling from the ice. And generally, on those, we have to wait for PUD to deem that the lines are not charged any longer. And we basically are the rescue crew. We don't generally clear trees or anything. We leave that to PUD or Public Works. We have the capability, it's life and death, but when we're dealing with flights on the ground, we don't get involved in that. I think one of our, our last rescue was in Wheeler. Anybody living in Wheeler from here, I know this is Manzanita City Council. Can you imagine Wheeler and ice together? There's no road you can drive up, right? It's, we did it a little bit, and then we slid down. This crew, we responded to a medical call up there, of course, at the top of one of the hills. The patient had to, then to walk the medical equipment to the house. Yet the patient put them in a rescue basket, like you see the helicopters load up and stuff called Stokes Basket, and set up a rope system so they could slide them down the road all the way to the ambulance. So these are very unique rescues. These are the only three, I believe, we had. There were some other minor medical calls, but very technical rescues. So although we weren't overwhelmed or too busy, thankfully, the crews were there when the pager went off in the middle of the night. And what people, I think, don't realize too, whether they're volunteer or paid, everyone has to leave their family or sometimes their job to go do these things. So your house may not have the power, and you're leaving your wife and kids to go help other people. So there's a big dynamic to this full volunteer combination department that we run here. And it's not uncommon, but it's a unique service that there's really a lot of sacrifice in everybody's personal life that comes with it. I do have to give profits to Public Works, Tillamook County Public Works. They were on immediately sanding the roads so we could get access to everything. It was the state roads that were really, 101 was not good, and 53 was not good, I have a 53 compared to our county roads. And that hasn't always been the case, for whatever reason. You know, you have resources where you have resources, so they must have planned ahead and had their sanding trucks chained up and ready to go, because we had some warning that this might happen. But I was very impressed. So thanks, Chris, for that response, and it is no unnoticed. Any other incidents, guys? Yes, we had a group who actually stayed the night at the station. I think it's because we had a backup generator and there's power there. What we didn't realize is none of the heaters worked. So all the power is going to the kitchen and the lights and stuff, so we got to remedy that. Usually when we have power outages, it's in the 50s or 60s, right? We get the windstorms and it's warm. Well, we found out that we don't have enough heat, or maybe none. So we might have run some extension cords and done some stuff that we tell you not to do. So we made it. But again, a sacrifice to stay away from your family for an entire night while your family's in the dark and there. And Leisha even made us some food there that Public Works got to partake in, some warm food when you've been out in the elements. So we just all work together, whatever way we can. I'm listening, buddy. Randy did a good job, too. The communications was the best. I've seen two conference calls a day for updates. I was able to make most of them, mostly from my cell phone because I didn't have internet at my house if I was home. Thankfully, the fire station grown RTI internet. It's been a problem for them, but we never lost internet, and that was vital to operations in an emergency. I believe Spectrum was there most of the time. All those little things that you don't realize until it happens came together. And
That's one nice thing about a power outage, where nobody dies, but you figure out all the things that you could do better or change. You might want to introduce your board members?
Yes, we do have two board members here tonight. Mike Sims, right there, also an officer with Manzanita, and John Handler in the back there, previous Public Works for City of Man. Everybody is very invested in the community.
That's great. Thank you, Frank.
Well, Dan, I think the Nahalem Bay Fire and Rescue, they are more than firefighters. A prime example, several months ago, I actually called them to help assist me, who was assisting Wheeler, it was flooding. So they are many, many things that they can do. So as Chief Knight talked about, the county roads, who made a lot of us look kind of bad, they did such an awesome job, was the County Road Department. They were outstanding on their preparation. They kept the roads as best they could through that storm. So with that, I'd like to introduce the Tillamook County Public Works Director and let him say a few words about what they did and how it worked.
Thanks, Dan. So a lot of this, these type of events, they happen so fast. The nice thing is, we knew this was coming. And we knew this was coming for a while. And what that allowed us to do was that advanced prep, that's getting out there, deicing the roads before applying the deicer, before it started icing up. The issue with that is it was just coming down so fast, it overwhelmed the deicer really, really fast. So we had preloaded our gravel trucks, we had the chains ready to go. Fortunately, you know, we're able to get to a lot of places, but it's nice to get to more places. We didn't put ourselves in harm's way, that was one of the biggest things. There's plenty of roads out there with two feet that we would not take our vehicles on, they just had to wait till it melted. The nice thing, too, is that we've been pretty aggressive in cutting some of the trees on the sides of the road, getting that sun on the road, and that's helped out quite a bit. So when the ice starts melting, the areas that were shady, they never get much of a chance. It took a couple of days for that areas to file out. So the trimming of the trees, it wasn't so much, I mean, the guys performed excellent during the event. A lot of it was all the work that we've been doing today, it's not just one single event. It was the prep and getting there. But the six guys that really maintained from Tillamook all the way to the north, all their work before the event and during the event is they just did an outstanding job.
So partnerships are important. And one of the things with Manzay Public Works is we do partner a lot with the county. Part of this ice storm is we removed a lot of tree debris, a lot. We were able to move it up to our shop where we staged that material, but then we're stuck with having to essentially rent a large chipping machine to come in. Well, partnerships like with the county, the county essentially came in and helped us. They ran all of our tree debris through their chipper. And what we do in exchange, we help them with sweeping the roads and stuff, so they don't have to try to bring another piece of equipment up. So it's a great trade-off. On that note, the city will have lots of wood chips. People want some, we're going to have. So you'll see the large, large pile sitting over at the Plaza property in the back where we kind of keep chips and stuff. So email Public Works if you're interested in some wood chips. Again, those partnerships are super important. The next person I want to introduce is Randy Thorpe with Tillamook County. Randy is who I talk to. So essentially, things that go on up here in the city, events and things like that, they usually get funneled to me, and then I funnel them to him. And part of the funnel effect is the money. Now it takes some time for money to get here, and he can talk about that more. But we're here at the city. We requested roughly, it was just over $25,000 towards being able to get reimbursed for these type of events. So I'd like to introduce Randy Thorpe and let him give a few words about emergency management, what they essentially helped out with our events. Right like for you, bud.
Yes, I'm Randy Thorpe. I am the County Emergency Manager, Department of One. But one thing that does is that there are so many people around here that make me look good. And they're all in this room right now. And that's what I really like, is that effort in working with them. Because when they work right, I just sit back and smile and say, yeah, that's my peach, you know? This is, this is the way it works in this county. But my biggest thing is that I try to, like Chris said, really try to come up with some ideas of when a disaster, when the flooding is going to happen, when an ice storm is going to happen, and try to get as much free warning out as we can. And that's one of my biggest jobs, is to try to get that information from National Weather Service and other agencies, and then get it sent out to everybody. During this event, I was calling Dan, what, twice, three, four, five, six times a day. And my whole reason was, two reasons. One is, he was my eyes up here because I was stuck at my house, and it was a weekend, and so he was my eyes up here. He would go out, he would check roads, he'd check areas, and he'd report back. So and I could make my reports up to the state. And so that's what really worked out well, is to have that. It's the same thing as that I called all the other people in the south end of the county, two in the central end of the county. And that's the other reason why we had the twice-a-day briefings, is that that way we were able to get all the information in and funnel out. And that's my other job, is that I'm the connection to go upwards to the state to ask for additional equipment, supplies, and now money. And the biggest thing with this one was is that I worked with Mary Faith Bell, Commissioner Bell, and we got together and decided we were going to definitely do a county-wide declaration of emergency. And we were probably one of the first counties to do it. I don't know why the other counties didn't, but they finally got caught on that, yes, that's something we need to do. And the main reason to do that is that that way, that alerted the state and the governor, saying, hey, we've got an emergency here, we may need assistance. So then my next thing was, is that I started coming up and started to get some damage assessments from all the different groups. And they were sending me all their information on their initial assessments that were out there because we needed to track that and come up to see if the county met their threshold of 128,000, which was pretty easy to do, in damages in order to keep up with the declaration. This thing took all those from, I think, 11 different counties, a bunch of cities, and luckily statewide, they came up with $56 million in damages, which exceeded $8 million for a federal declaration. So right now, Governor Kotek is putting everything together to ask the president for a presidential declaration. It's basically going to be a slam dunk, I think, I'm hoping. I'm already, this next week, I'm going to be meeting with, the FEMA has assigned a Department of Emergency Management state liaison, and she's going to be meeting with me Monday. And we're going to start going over the next steps of our assessments that we need to have happen in order to get reimbursement. So that's another part of my job, is I try to do that, but, and also pushing prod people to give me damage information on time. I didn't do it on time. Last one, really, last minute, yeah. I say 5 o'clock, so what time do you give it to me? 5 to 5, it was great. But that's another part of my biggest job, is to make sure that I can provide assistance. I'm not out there risking my life in sub-zero weather and poor internet device. I'm sitting at home with my coffee and my computer and two cell phones and, and making, you know, and trying to give the support that I can to everybody else that's out there. Because that's, that's what my job is, is strictly support and to help. And again, it's, me and Dan have gotten a fairly good relationship now. He doesn't like it when I call him because I want something. But again, that type of relationship is what's, what makes this so easy and makes it work. And it makes my job extremely easy because of who I'm working with. And that's, I can't say enough for that way because it's, it's nice when other people can make me look good. So anyway, I appreciate what everybody's done and hopefully we'll start seeing some FEMA money, what, in about five years? But again, $5 in five years is more than what we have today. Anyway, thanks for everybody.
So Randy, thank you again for all you do now and what you're doing in the future for this. One thing Randy touched about is in the freezing cold. So Frankie said, you know, us fire guys were out in the freezing cold for just a little bit. Well, there was crews that were in that freezing cold from the moment it started, well beyond past the event, and that would be Tillamook PUD. And so Landon Myers is here to represent Tillamook PUD. They are our great people. And I have to say, the power outage we've seen, about 99% of it has nothing to even do with Tillamook PUD losing. It's the people giving them power. So they've been doing an outstanding job. They've been great to work with in the field. After the tornado, we've had a great working relationship with them to help get roads clear, get things open. So Landon, would you like to let the folks know a little bit?
Yeah, thanks for having us here tonight. I believe Joanna still lives online too. Zoom. Yeah, so for Tillamook PD, the event actually started about 9:30 in the morning in South County. It was our first call storm related. We actually had crews out from about two that morning, but it wasn't storm related stuff. About 9:30, first crews got called out and it just kept building a little bit, so more crews were coming in. At around one o'clock in the afternoon, 1:30, we lost the transmission line coming into the county. And so by mid-afternoon, we were about 11,000 customers out of power. Once the magnitude of the storm, you know, came about, we immediately activated our incident command team and which ICS teams. And so that means that not only are the crews out, but we fully staff our building with a team that's going to stay there 24 hours, stay as long as the storm's going. We'll have somebody at the, at the PUD. Our crews stayed out and worked non-stop. Like I said, the first crews came in at 9:30 in the morning on Saturday. None of the crews took their first break until 10 o'clock Sunday night. They went home and they were back in the trucks at 6 o'clock in the morning. They continued that. By the end of Sunday night, we were down to 1,000 people out, so we'd had 10,000 restored. By Tuesday afternoon, I believe it was around 5:30 in the evening, the last customer was brought back into service. And so, you know, when under, under a storm or something like that, when we're ICS event, it's, it's all hands on deck. And so because the crews don't stop, we take food out to them. Because of this storm, we can't go get food anywhere. So our staff cooked meals. They're at PUD and then we had staff that delivered those meals out into the field. And I'll say that Sunday morning, I, I got the pleasure of bringing the crews some meals and it was up on College Avenue. I made it down the hill really good. It was, it's a different story. Our, our crews, you know, they, they thrive on getting that power back. And just, just kind of quickly, how, how we do that, because I know, I know there's sometimes questions when the power comes back on. And maybe everybody has it in the area except one street and then you see PUD leave. And then they might not come back for part of a day or several hours. What we do is they assess the whole, the whole area and then they work to get the most amount of people on the fastest. And so if they can go up the road and get 800 customers on and then have to come back later to get 10 customers, then that, that's the way they do it. But once, another thing, Tillamook PD is part of a mutual aid agreement. And so surrounding and neighboring utilities come together during events like this and offer their help to help each other. And we've used other agencies in the past, like in the 2007 storm, 96 storm, to come into the area when, when there's significant damage, just to help bring the areas up. And if you thought Tillamook County got hit hard, Lane County was, was really, really bad. As soon as we had all of our customers back on, we sent crews down to help those, Central Lincoln, which is down in Newport, and Emerald down out of Lane County. And our crews went down there, the same crews that hadn't already been sleeping here. And the last customers got on down there January 28th, November 13th. And our, our crews were there the entire time. But like, I, I want to mirror what some of the others have. County Roads did an amazing job keeping the roads sanded and rock for our crews so they could get access. Dan White, so he's, he's top notch. Good communications, great communications at PUD. When I was up there delivering meals, I ran into Dan and he's out there by hand, walking the streets, putting salt down. So big kudos to that, but thanks for having us.
So I'll bounce on what he said again. It's, you know, PUD crew goes in. You don't see a lot of times the PUD crew goes into these streets. And what they actually do is they remove the power lines from the trees that are down. And then that gives us the ability to go in, take care of that mess. So then that crew, when they return, they don't have to try to fight through the mess, put lights up. And that's part of those partnerships, the things that a lot of folks don't see and know about. So the next two guys are our police department. So Mike and John were in communication with me, especially in the first night and day. Mike was there on the phone calling me up, trees are down, trees are down, trees are down. And we are limited on what we can do, just like them. But one of the things that like Mike would be doing is setting cones and stuff and helping us out. And they're always there. When my public crew gets called out at night, we have an on-call guy. And so one of my standing rules is my guys cannot operate a chainsaw by themselves. Well, guess who's the second person that can usually get there like instantaneously to make sure nobody gets hurt, watching over? And if something happens, they're in the ability to call for help from my person. So with that, I'd like to introduce Mike and John up and let you guys talk about that a little bit and what you guys do and Dan, put you on the spot. Sorry.
I'm Mike. John. So helping out with Dan, I know that I was really excited to call Dan and say, do we still have this chainsaw rule? Because I remember years ago, we were able to run chainsaws by ourselves. That's like an exciting part of my job. I don't get to do anymore. Need to have that conversation with insurance to see if we can get more saws in the hands of local officers. Because I'm there. So I was a tow strap and was able to clear driveways and streets and everything that I couldn't clear for PUD because of lines down. I made sure to tell Dan, hey, there's cones or tape and whatnot. But after playing on the bridge with the fire department, was able to help out with clearing that. There was a transit bus that was also stuck on the bridge for a while. Spectrum, they had a van that was on the bridge for a while. But really, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the citizens because I gained like five pounds that weekend. They brought me chili and cornbread, banana bread and cookies. And there were some citizens that were on the bridge with me, hooking up to the Spectrum van with their own chain and their own four-wheel drive trucks. Just, it really was. And these are folks that live here and they're on the fire department. Levi Hill, he's not here tonight. There's a citizen up on Ridge Road, Vince Venezia. He jumped in. He helped me wrangle a bunch of trees with some tow straps and got roads open and driveways clear. He's not here tonight. But thanks to the community because you guys help out just as much. And again, I eat a lot of food. I don't know about John.
Yeah, one of my tasks was staying home. I was calling Mike saying, hey, how bad is it? He was telling me he was, like saying, he's taking a tow strap, moving branches. I didn't have a big play in anything. I stayed home most of the time because Chief probably didn't want us wrecking our, wrecking our rigs. I did get a call out. One of our other big players in this is our dispatch. They were vital in, you know, communication. I got called by one of my friends, the dispatcher. He's like, hey, this isn't a call out. It doesn't fall under the matrix, but we have somebody who don't have power at their house. She can't start her generator. And you go there, I was like, yeah. So my car door was really frozen, except my patrol car. I tried starting the car, letting it run, didn't do anything. I tried on the door handle and it almost broke off. So I did, I was able to just take some personal buck, went to the house, the generator's just had gas, but fueling it fired right up. That being said, she did get power to her house and made me feel good. And the dispatcher, like he said, you know, that doesn't fall under our call matrix, but he was able to say, like, I didn't know what to tell her. I didn't want her to be home by herself, you know, freezing. He's like, you know, can you go do it? So just little things like that are key for the community and being able, you know, feel good and going on after that, so.
Hey, you guys, they do a ton. Once again, most of these folks do is multiple tasks. We wear multiple hats. So the next group I'm gonna call up is my group. And so Public Works guys, if you can come up here, I'm gonna introduce them. So during the event, Saturday morning, Jeremy was our, our first line of out. He went out and sanded the roads best he could. And of course, the ice storm said, nah, never mind. Half an hour into, after he got done, it was frozen over, but he did an outstanding job in doing it. And then he's been a huge part of the recovery. So Jeremy is one of our utility workers. So we don't get them into these meetings very often. That's why I made them. Jason is my senior utility worker or was, or not. Yeah, it's not, yeah, was. So Jeremy or Jason's actually taking a job in the Haylen Bay Fire and Rescue District. So it's bittersweet for me. So I've had him for seven years with the city. He's been a great help, but unfortunately my Public Works rigs are not red and have red flashy lights. I asked permission, but there was head shaking, no sirens. So and then Jason's big help is of course during the ice storm, both him and Jeremy were stranded. They couldn't get in because of the ice. Where they live, they were locked in. So pretty much all day Saturday, all day Sunday. And Saturday night, I had Josh Hamilton, our newest utility worker with me. And so he wears multiple hats as well. So we were kind of bouncing between here and there, but he was an outstanding help. We were going around cutting open roads, moving branches the best we could, just trying to get access. So if the fire department or police department had to come sliding down the road, they could. So I wanted to introduce them and thank them for all that they do here at the city. So. So part of the event also paints a picture to us. So in a catastrophic event, the earthquake thing, not that we always want to go there, but it paints the picture. Guess what? You can't drive nowhere. You don't have any power. The ability to get places is darn near impossible. But we have a special, special resource in our community that is a ton of help. They were part of communicating with me using radio systems and cell phones and giving me tons and tons of information. And so for that group, which is the Haylen Bay Emergency Volunteer Corps, I'm gonna have Brad stand up, calling on the counselors. But I'll have Brad introduce some of the folks and talk about how EVC was there and they are a tremendous help to us. So Brad?
Thanks, Dan. For those of you that are not aware, Linda and I both are part of the EVC and B organization and thought to say so. We were involved in this event as well as many other people that belong to the organization. When the prediction for the winter storms was received, the EVC and B took the role of keeping the community informed and educated. We sent out advisories and information via our website, email blast, and on social media about how to be prepared for the winter storm. When the storm event occurred, we established regular communication with the city emergency manager, Dan. We were able to take up-to-date information he was receiving from the county emergency manager, Randy, T-PUD, and our local villages. In turn, we communicated that information via yellow radio, social media, and our website. There were too many volunteers involved to name them all individually. Many of them were engaged on their yellow radios, listening on the Manzanita repeater, channel 119, in turn disseminating information on their local zone channels. In addition to the volunteers, our trained yellow radio users were also present. They all assisted in reporting down trees and power lines in addition to checking on and helping neighbors in need. Our team stepped up and participated in the overall event. Don't forget to check on your neighbors during an emergency event. Neighbors, helping neighbors is part of the fabric that weaves our community together. We received positive feedback from the community for our efforts. Our sincere gratitude to all who helped during the event. And I would like to recognize that the EVC and B colleagues would stand up. We've got Bruce Maxwell, who did a fantastic job of taking the responsibility of net control on channel 119. He also works with our infrastructure on communications. Bill Dehandler, who heads up shelters and our medical reserve corps. And Karen Sarnacker, who works with our yellow radio program, making sure we're all up to speed and trained. And I'll give a plug here if any of you in here don't have a yellow radio and have not been trained. Still saying you, she'll get a radio in your hands. It's, it's an essential piece of equipment that we all need to have and be trained on. In the case, our traditional methods of communication are available. We've got the yellow radios. In addition to the folks, I recognized we have some other volunteers here. Chris Campbell, who heads up our Prepare Your Neighborhood Division. Mark Adamson, who helps us with technology. We've also got Lee Hilton Brand, who works with the Public Works Auxiliary Team. So he's a big support to Dan. And then of course, myself and Linda. We probably have some certs in the room. I may have missed and I'm sure there's quite a few folks online that helped in the effort again. So our gratitude to all of you that helped. And please, if you're interested in yellow radio or becoming a volunteer with the EVC and B, we'd love to bring you on board. Just let us know. Thanks.
So my last, essentially, big thank you is to also to the folks at this table. So they're the ones that make the job essentially like an emergency manager happen. So they provide the leadership, the guidance. They are the, essentially the backside, the logistics of it. They're, they're always asking in events, what can I do to help? What can I do to help? But once again, it's their leadership and guidance to help the city overall be able to be prepared, respond and recover from these events. So thank you for all of your guys' help and support. I will turn it back over to you folks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think I feel the need to stand up. We can applaud as you're leaving, but I really want to stand up and applaud everybody. Everybody at home. Not looking for another emergency, but when we have one, we thank the ones. So thanks a lot, everybody. Take care.
Thanks, Frankie. Thanks. It's love. Thank you very much, Frankie. Thank you.
So we're gonna go right into the, right into the next part of our meeting. Okay, Tom, move it on. You don't know me, but I know you. All right. Um, I'm not going to regabble because that would be kind of silly. Um, I'd be over gabbling, don't you think, to get it back in order again?
Yes.
We are going to start with the next portion of our meeting now. Um, and we'll get back into more of our, our regular routine. I would have to say, I knew this would take longer than we planned it and I don't really care.
I agree.
I, uh, you can never spend too much time appreciating the work that people do. So, uh, but well, now we'll get on to it. So we're going to move to um, uh, comments next. And Leila was kind enough to do a, a script for me. Being new in this, it's kind of helpful to look and see, make sure you're on track. So I'm sure as time goes by, I'll be reading less. But you'll see me read a little bit tonight. And I want to make sure also, uh, as we go forward, that it's clear to everyone, even if it's your first time at a meeting, what we're doing in that particular part of the meeting and why we're doing it, why sometimes we invite comment, why sometimes it's only counselors, only why it's counselors speaking, just so that's clear for everyone. So uh, this is the next part of the agenda. Counsel will hear community member statements regarding city business. Comments must be limited to city business topics that are not on the agenda. Those wishing to speak who are here in person should have signed in. Um, if you're on Zoom or otherwise, you can indicate as we get into this, uh, if you want to speak, because obviously you can't be here to sign up. Uh, before you make your comments, we'd like you to state your name and the city of residence. We don't need a specific address, but we'd just like to know which community or part of the community that you're from. Uh, because information provided during this comments may be new, the city manager or, or council member will respond at the next council meeting if there's some follow-up required. So in other words, it's not our tradition or practice to respond immediately to comments. Uh, there may be an exception that's required for that, but normally this is a time for citizens who want to say something that's not on the agenda, can address that. If some follow-ups required, we'll, we'll hit it the next month. So before we begin, just Leila, Ms. Amon, anything from last month?
Name. Yeah.
Okay. We'll keep, we'll stick with Leila. You have anything from last month?
Not from community comment last month. No.
Okay. Nancy, has anybody signed up to speak tonight? Okay.
All right. First is Laura Bailey. Come forward, state your name and your city of residence.
Laura Bailey. I live here in Manzanita and I've been reflecting on some dynamics in the community that, um, after listening to the extraordinary stories of collaboration here, I think really speak to that aspect of Manzanita. I've been thinking about the fact that two of the latest, maybe small, but still in my mind, very positive policy initiatives that have been engaged by the council and the city management are things that came from ideas from the community, uh, dark skies and 20 is plenty. Um, and although I don't know everything about how those citizens got interested in those issues, some of these are things that I learned about first here at council. Some of them are things I learned about at Mayor Mondays or conversations with counselors. It just strikes me that it's kind of the best example of how our community should work. When somebody has a problem they want to solve or an idea they think that can make it better, they grab it. They run with it. They get their neighbors involved and then they come to council and the city management and say, this is what we'd like. What do you guys think? And I just wanted to say that because in the same spirit as what we just listened to, there's no way we'd accomplish what we would like to accomplish as a community if we just relied upon people whose job it is to do those things. So I wanted to thank the citizens behind those two initiatives, some of whose names I know, some of whom I don't. So I'm just going to leave it general and say that I think that's a great way for the city to run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bruce Burton, state your name and city of residence.
Uh, Bruce Burton, uh, the greater city of Manzanita. Um, I'm here for a shout out. Um, we have a son who's a lieutenant in Portland Police Force, so we have some experience with that. And I feel very fortunate to live in Manzanita and have such a friendly police force. It always amazes me that you guys are friendly. It could wave to me, but I want to tell you a story of Sergeant Mike Sims being a hero. Um, and it's nothing to do with ice storms, but our three-year-old grandson was here with his dad. And he constantly wants to call on his toy phone, the police department. We were at the plaza launching a rocket that goes up with water and air, pumping it up and Connie ran into Sergeant and Mike and said, hey, would you mind going by? And he did. He was gracious, put the lights on, came and gave him a sticker and his eyes were as big as saucers, but I just wanted to say thank you. Shit you back.
There's nothing else.
Nancy, do we have anybody on Zoom or online?
No.
Okay. No thumbs up, no that, no that weird thumbs up thing we're all used to now. Okay. So thank you for the comments. They are appreciated um, very much. So we're going to move to the consent agenda next. So the next item is this consent agenda. The items that we're approving are approved in one motion. And any council member may remove an item for separate consideration. Tonight's consent agenda is the traditional one, uh, and it'll include the notes, uh, minutes from three meetings. We've had three sessions since we last met. So the January 3rd regular session, the January 10th work session, and the January 23rd, 2024 budget committee work session. It'll also include approval of bills payment, including all checks previously approved by the city manager and the city counselor. Is there anybody, any member of council who wants to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No.
No. Good. Okay. Can I, uh, you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The consent agenda, usually that's not one that takes a long time.
No, that's, that's easy. That's the easy one.
We're good. Okay. So next up, uh, is the city manager report. I'm not, I'm going to call you Leila now. There's not going to be any more of this.
Yeah, no, this form.
Is a man. Okay. All right. So are there any updates for the um, community or for the council at this time from?
Yeah, I'll be brief. Thank you. Um, so last time we met, uh, Dan did a really wonderful presentation on the issue we're dealing with the trails, trail immunity. And we had hoped by now to have some trail costs and some maps up on the city website. We haven't gotten there yet, but we're on our way. So Dan's been working diligently on that. We just got our report back from county insurance. And so we anticipate having that up probably before the next city council meeting. So we just wanted to let folks know we didn't forget and um, we're still working on that. Um, also just a plug for folks that you can pay your water bill online and you can also receive your bills online. So if you haven't signed up, we encourage you to do that. Um, saves paper and then also saves postage. So please do consider looking at that.
And Leila, if I might mention.
Yes.
If any of you are concerned about missing the newsletters that are in there or any special announcements, those are available electronically as well. Once you sign up.
Thank you. And I'll note that it was Council Hart that asked me to give that plug. So thanks for that. Uh, so I did want to announce, I'm very excited to announce that the city received a $75,000 grant. And from the Tillamook County Visitors Association Facilities Grant Program. So we applied for a grant to pay for uh, the upgrades to the bathroom that will be in the city hall building. Um, so that we can make those available during big events like the Fourth of July Parade, Farmer's Market. Um, so that required some additional finishes in those restrooms as well as additional security and other measures that were necessary. And so we're super excited that the county and the county commission approved those grants. I think it was just last week. So that's, that's a big deal. Um, so we're excited about that. And then I did want to note that we have a tentative, a strong tentative plan to have a virtual town hall for city hall on February 27th. We're anticipating that to be from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. We're doing that virtually so we can have the entire design team and construction team present as well as offering it as an opportunity for folks who may not be able to attend to uh, view that after the fact. What we're going to do is kind of go through sort of where we started almost three years ago, well, 30, but where, where we've been since I've been here to where we are today. So construction documents, um, and I'll talk a little bit more about this when we get to the supplemental uh, budget, but we're completed. We're out to bid right now. So the plans are out there and being bid. And we'll know more. The reason it's tentative is if we get a price back that we need to work on, we may want to pause that and come back later, but we'll keep folks posted. Um, we'll post it tentatively on the website and then as that date becomes firm, it will be um, made clear there. So really excited about that. Really look forward to sharing.
Wait, what's the date again?
Uh, sorry, February 27th.
Okay.
And we're anticipating 5:30 to 7:00 PM. Perfect. We wanted to do it after hours for folks that may have day jobs and want to participate.
So it's a hundred percent on Zoom or we're doing it here?
Hundred percent on Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we get the architects that are out of Portland, which just makes things a lot easier, especially yeah, this time of year. So we're excited for that. I anticipate we'll have it, but I just want to copy out it in case we need to spend a little time. Value engineering, we'll probably push it out a week or so if we have to, but that's where we're, we're at the moment.
Wait, a quick question on the trails, uh, discussion. Are, how are we communicating that to the public? Are we, is it on the website?
We will be putting up a map on the website.
Okay.
And then I, I think that's it. We can probably shoot it out via our listeners.
If we could do.
And social media, we'll, we'll.
That would be great. That'd be great. I think it's really important.
Look at it, Dan, like remind me.
We dropped a nice storm in the middle of our trail projects.
Oh, yeah, we have. Yeah. It's come up.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome, Leila. So we're going to take a, a brief moment now and just uh, go across counselors to see if there are any updates. So Jerry, would you mind starting?
Uh, sure. So I uh, would normally update uh, in this slot on the revenue diversification project. Don't have a lot to say because we're trying to, we're waiting on two events. One is the appointment of a fifth counselor and then uh, our council goal setting uh, session in early March where we will develop uh, communication strategy going forward, uh, and align it with our goals. Uh, but the anticipation is that we will be rolling out in some fashion, uh, during this year, uh, the conversations with councils about the revenue diversification options that council's been kicking around for a while. So um, we've been putting it off for a while, but it's uh, makes sense to align it with uh, other communication needs that we have based on our goals and certainly makes sense to wait for a full council.
Well, thank you, Linda.
Okay. So I have uh, three, three things I'd like to talk about. First is communications. Um, good follow-up to Jerry. Uh, as, as council has uh, approached communication, we're working on developing ways that we can expand communication so that we're more effective in getting a consistent and thoughtful uh, way to make sure that we communicate. Uh, you will be hearing a lot more about this. I think uh, Jerry's point is, is spot on. We will be meeting in a retreat in early March to finalize our goals. I am absolutely confident that a major part of those goals will be communication to the community. Um, and so I, I, I think that's, we all think that's really important. There is an amazing amount of inaccurate information that's flowing on social media. And uh, I really encourage you, if you have a question that you don't know the answer to, call a city counselor. We, we would be more than happy to respond. Call the city hall, call the department. If we really would prefer to get the right information out and the accurate information. And so we are asking you to please, if you have a question, don't go to social media, go to the source. And we'd love to respond to that. Um, secondly, and this is a comment to Bill on what uh, Dan was, was talking about. So the city's count, the city's responsibility, city council's responsibility is to keep the community safe. That's, that's a prime responsibility of ours. And during this emergency, this, this regional emergency really learned a lot. You, you heard a good deal about it, uh, in the, in the first part of the meeting. But I would like to ask consensus from the city council. Uh, I'd like to be able to, to uh, notify the council when there's emergency. I'd like to be able to have them be able to communicate on yellow radio so that they know what's going on in the community. And I'd also like to have an incident command class, um, an instant command, and I think it was Landon that talked about that. When you go into an emergency, you, there is a form of operation that you must follow and it's called the incident command system. And it's, it's very detailed and very specific. And Todd Simmons, who's the general manager of TPUD, is just an exceptional teacher. And so he is willing to come and teach us ICS 101, which is what we need to know. But what I'd like to do is not have it just us, have it the city councils of Wheeler, Nahalem and Manzanita, so that we do that together, which is good for all of us because one of the issues that surfaced this last time was we didn't have really good communication with some of the other cities. And this should, should help that. And I think it's just good for getting to know each other and, and working together. Uh, we, we would do this originally and I would recommend the council support this by consensus, if you're okay.
We need to make a motion or?
No, I don't think we need. I think strong head nods, strong.
If there was a bigger number than a hundred percent, I would say it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, and then last, um, we're uh, getting ready to do the city manager performance review. We'll do it for the end of February, first part of March. Uh, last year we had significant input from the community, which was great. Um, this year responding to a request from Carol Kennedy, we will do it again. So if you have comments you'd like to share uh, about the city manager, supportive of the city manager or issues, please send it to cityhall@ci.mansanita.or.us. We'd love to see your comments. The council will review them all. And if you put in the, in the title line, a city manager evaluation, that way Nancy would know to get them directly to us. So that would be great. So if you have time, that would be wonderful. So that's my report.
Great. Thanks. Brad?
Uh, my update's in the agenda, so I will speak to it later.
Okay. I'll say the same. I'm glad we have the comprehensive plan on the agenda for tonight. Leila will be discussing that and we'll have some conversation about it. So well for until then. Okay. Time for some new business supplemental budget. So the first item on our proposed.
Good. Oh, sorry. We added that special.
Operation.
Manager.
Yes, we did.
We didn't hand you updated.
And I missed it. And that's fine. So we just correct ourselves and move on.
Yes.
What we all do. So.
Which is what I did when I was doing.
Yes. So Leila, you've got a, a position shift or a change you want to talk about?
Oh, yeah.
Catching that?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so let me just get my screen shared here and get that sorted. Okay. We need some theme music as we wait. More. Yeah. Okay. So thank you. Um, so I think as Dan mentioned during the update, we have one of our key members of our team will be leaving. Um, but this has actually been something that's been in the works for Dan and I for some time. And uh, with Jason's departure, and I would say that I think Jason's running to, not away. I think there's some, some pain there and I'm glad for that. Uh, we really appreciate uh, Jason's contribution to our team. It's a big loss. But uh, over the last couple of years, especially, um, I had to really give a shout out to Dan. Dan has really leveled up his game if that were possible because he was operating at a really high level when I got here. But uh, the work of the public works team isn't just the out in the field work. There's a lot of administrative work that's um, really critical. And Dan has really risen to that occasion. And because of that, uh, Dan's workload has, I think, really increased frankly, a lot and without complaint. But one of the things that's really important to me as a manager is that my staff is not overworked and um, that they have the capacity to do what they need to do really well. And Dan has done that. He really has in spades. But there is, I think, a, a real strong need for having somebody who can provide a supervisory role in the field. So many of, so Dan does it all. He's the jack of all trades. Um, I've sort of asked him to level up on things like the budget, things like planning a capital improvement plan, um, things that are really structurally necessary to kind of bring this city forward. And he has done that. Um, but I think our team would benefit deeply from having someone who's out in the field to support Dan um, in the field operations of, of our, of our staff, which primarily the public work staff are out in the field. So Dan kind of carries the weight of all of it. And um, so what I would like to propose is a. carries the weight of all of it. And um, so what I would like to propose is uh taking, this is not a new full-time equivalent, so it's not a new position in the public works department. But it's kind of like what we did when we promoted Sergeant Sims, is that we're taking an existing position and we're putting it into more of a supervisory role. So uh Dan did a bunch of research. We talked a lot about what the needs were for the department and created a um work description, which I provided to council. We'll post it on, it's actually posted online already um to describe that position. And so this person would perform a supervisory role for the Department of Public Works. They would support the Public Works Director and they would oversee um and have management responsibility for the public work staff that are out in field. As I mentioned, it's not a new position. Um, it also provides some redundancy. And that's again, something that when we, we moved Sims into that sergeant role was to provide that support to this chief of police as well, is that we need um someone who's available and able to and like, Dan knows a lot. If anybody's ever sat and talked to Dan, it's like their mind just explodes.
Yeah, that's true.
Information, technical information, the certifications this man has. And that's just like in his day job. And then the work that he does for the fire department is just incredible. So we really need someone who can help Dan with that and to get those advanced certifications in water um so that Dan can take a vacation without taking his laptop. And that's not the only reason. It's, the department needs it. And so I think the, the agency, um, our, our, our team has really um gotten to a place now where this is a necessary component of, of what we do in order to provide the, the high level of service that we do. So we're proposing uh that we create an operations manager position. This will be the position that will replace uh as Jason leaves, we will hire to replace him with this position. And um I really do believe that this increases our resiliency as a city as well. So what I'm asking today is uh for council to uh make a motion to approve this job description. And then the salary scale that I've put in here, it's about ten percent above what a uh senior utility worker makes um to help us attract someone that can fill this role. Um, there's a lot of jobs right now available for folks in the water business. And we know it's going to be really challenging to attract somebody within this position. But we're hopeful that the additional responsibility and the um the salary that we're proposing will get us some really good solid candidates in. Um, we currently have a twenty minute requirement for folks. We're going to try to stick to that. But if we do get a really qualified applicant who lives a little further out, um, we may just have to do that. And I've talked to Dan about how we can sort of triage in the event that he's gone and somebody else can't come and fill that role. But we, um, I think it's, it's all of you probably know and members of our community that we've had a lot of trouble filling uh the positions of utility worker. We have a really good solid team. Obviously, Jason's a big deal for us, but we do have faith that um we can bring somebody in to uh fill this, I think, very critical important um role. So I would just ask for council's support to approve this description and the salary scale. And then we're off to the races.
Before uh looking for a motion, are there questions or comments that counselors have for Leila?
Yes. And the answer to.
Well, I, it's just really important to get, to allow Dan to do the work. He does really well and to get somebody out in the field. So I, I fully support this position. It's critical.
Shall we go to a motion then?
Do we need community input or?
I don't, yeah, we could. Why not? I don't think it's technically required, but we could certainly have it. Is there any comment from the community, either here in the room or online about this discussion we're having?
I think we have a thumbs up, which is. Two thumbs up.
Is there anything online?
Carol Kennedy? Brad?
Okay, um, am I there? I just wanted, I have met Jason several times and I just want to compliment him and wish him the very best of luck. He's just been a wonderful guy and so responsive to the community. And that's just been, he's just been wonderful. And I'm, I'm really glad that you're trying to find somebody really competent to fill his position. It'll be tough. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone else?
I'll reiterate what Carol said. One of my neighbors was kind enough to um talk to me about an issue she was having with a water leak. She's part-time. Uh, she was here, got her bill, realized uh the issue, got in touch with Public Works. Uh, Jason came out, changed her meter, talked to her about what was happening. She left town again. He took it upon himself to go and check that meter and discover that it was still running at a high rate and shut it off for her.
Wow.
So she was very complimentary of his work in Public Works and I just wanted to pass along that, that praise. It was really important to her.
Great.
Okay, glad to hear it. And I have a motion?
Uh, I move that we, that we hire the operations manager position for Public Works at the salary scale that Leila presented.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Go forth.
Much.
All right. And good luck, Dan, with that recruiting program because that's not going to be an easy one, so.
It's uh, it's a big list out there of cities. I think it's still open as far as uh April of last year.
Well, if you want to bring candidates in and we can have an appreciation night for Public Works again while you're recruiting, let us know if that'll be helpful. It's in all of our interests to get the best people. So thank you. Yeah, great. Thanks, Leila. The preparation that went into that. Okay, so now I think we can move on to the um supplemental budget. So I am going to read this because it's a budget thing. You always want to be very careful with budget things. Make sure you have everything correct. So this first, this next item on the agenda is the proposed supplemental budget that will allow the city to take out debt from the Special Public Works Fund to fund the construction of the new city hall. The supplemental budget requires a public hearing, which was noticed on January twenty-four in the Tillamook Headlight Herald. City manager will go over the staff report, so Leila will take us through that. And then city council will open a public hearing on the matter to take public comment on the proposed supplemental budget. At the conclusion of that public hearing, the city council will deliberate and make its decision. So Leila, do you want to take us through the staff report?
Yeah, thank you. I will. Uh, so I'm going to start with timeline, just kind of let folks know where we've been, where we're going, where we're at. We're just, we're so close. So uh we, back in December, um authorized uh financing. In January, I did an overview of what we would need to do in terms of next steps to get that funding in place. Um, we are here today to actually pass the supplemental budget, is my hope. Uh, once that's done, we have a work session next week. I'll be briefly going over a financial forecast to just remind council where we stand financially with respect to um taking on that initial debt. And then March, we're still anticipating at this time uh the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the construction manager, general contractor contract, which means that's when we sign the dotted line and then we start construction in April. So we are, we are getting very close to uh where we need to be in order to um advance this. And the reason why we need to prepare a supplemental budget is, and that we can, so we do have authorization from the state to make changes to the city's budget. Um, if there's an occurrence or a condition that we were not aware of at the time when the budget was prepared, that requires a change in financial planning. So at the time in the twenty twenty-four budget, we actually didn't know how we were going to finance uh the construction of new city hall. We um had not dedicated a funding source or identified or approved funding, so we didn't know who we were taking out debt from, if we were taking out debt. And we didn't know how much funding would be required. And so we've answered those questions. We'll know in detail how much funding will be required in March when we're ready to present the G M P to council and to the community. So for those reasons, um, we have the authorization to prepare a supplemental budget. If the proposed supplemental budget changes any funds more than ten percent, uh then we need to hold a public hearing. And I want to clarify that the hearing is held by the governing body, which are these folks before me today, not the budget committee. Although I think it's important when you have a committee like that to uh advise them and to brief them and to get feedback. And so we did that on January twenty-third, provided an overview of the supplemental budget to the budget committee. And um we're here today to ask for city council to approve uh the resolution that would authorize uh the change. We did issue notice. The state law requires that we issue notice no less than five days before a hearing. And it has to be published in a way that it was published when the original budget was proposed. And so we always publish notice in the Tillamook Headlight Herald, as well as in the three places around town. And so we did that. Um, this notice, which you see here, is, ran in the Headlight Herald on January twenty-fourth, those two weeks in advance of tonight's hearing. So the supplemental budget basically needs to include uh a summary. It needs to include the name of the fund, the source of the funds, and the amount of any resources that are changing. And so when I talk about appropriation, that's the authority that we have to spend or allocate money. Um, and so, and what those revised totals are. So the uh, so what we're doing is we are asking council to allow us to accept we're estimating, we don't think we'll spend this much money in this fiscal year, but like to just be safe and sorry, um, three million dollars. So that's, that's registered as, as a resource. You can see that under the Special Public Works Fund debt proceeds. So that will be an increase in resources in the general fund. We also, at the last city council meeting, council authorized the allocation of the COVID resources, a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars that we received in COVID relief funds to be transferred into the city hall fund. So you'll see that as a decrease in our fund balance for a total of three point one four seven million dollars. So that's the difference in resources. Those requirements are then recorded under non-departmental. So the way our budget operates is uh transfers. So that means money that goes from one fund to another are recorded on the non-departmental department budget. And so within that, we had a total of a hundred, one point one five million dollars worth of transfers, which includes a number of different items. Um, we're revising that to include a transfer of three million dollars from the general fund that will go into the city hall fund. Okay, that's cool. Sometimes somebody, one long, you have things. Um, I don't like, like the virtual sound of my voice driving me insane.
But you're fine.
Uh, so, so then um that does change our ending fund balance in the general fund because we're decreasing that amount because we're pulling out the hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars transfer that into the city hall fund. The city hall fund, just for your information, is a, it's a capital project fund. So that's a way for us to do the accounting to make sure that what money is being sent on the capital project is being spent out of that fund. So we do have transfers that go in from the general fund into the city hall fund. So we're receiving that money into the city hall fund, into the general fund, and then transferring it into the city hall fund, which is what you see recorded here in the resources and requirements for the city hall fund. So the city council, through the adoption of the budget, authorized a transfer of seven hundred thousand dollars from the general fund into the city hall fund. That number will now go up to three uh million eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, which is a difference of that three point one four seven million dollars. And then those requirements, this authorizes us to spend up to that much money. So it all matches. That's what it's supposed to do. Um, but basically what it's accounting for is saying we're taking in this much money and we're transferring this much money into the city hall fund. The city hall fund's receiving this much money and now we're allocated and allowed to spend that much money in the city hall fund. And then this will be updated in the city's budget. But the city council is being asked to um approve this resolution tonight within, which then gives me the authority to basically execute the, the G M P and then start to pay our contractor with that funding. Um, so the next step is we're asking council tonight to hold a public hearing and take public comment and then ultimately approve a resolution that authorizes a supplemental budget for the current fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have a year now or later.
Why don't we do that after the?
Sounds good.
Okay, so I will now call the public hearing in the matter of the proposed supplemental budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four to order. Are there any members of the audience, either in person or online, who wish to speak? If you've not signed up on the sign-in sheet, please raise your hand. For members participating via online, please raise your hand and staff will call on you once the in-person testimony is complete. Do we have anyone here in the room who would like to make comment? I think that's enough of a wait for that. Yeah. So how about online? Do we have anybody?
No hands.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and now we're going to invite some discussion and deliberation among the council. I preface that request with just the reminder to everyone that there have been many hours spent on this. So if you don't see a lot of deliberation up here at this point, it's because we've spent a significant amount of time with full budget committee. Also, prior to that, when we set the budget for this year and had the discussion, so we knew we have to do this partway through the year. So are there any other comments though or questions any other council would like to ask? Jerry?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I've already asked it a couple of times and you've answered it a couple of times. It's not that I'm not understanding. It's just that I, I want to make sure we have the same understanding. Uh, the three million dollars is uh an estimation of how much uh debt we may need to pull before the end of this fiscal year.
Correct.
Uh, but we don't actually receive those dollars until we have invoices to pay. So I guess I raise this two questions. One is uh we're getting ready to uh begin the budget process uh for the next fiscal year. So there will be a similar number, different amount, but a similar number in the next uh fiscal year budget. How uh how complicated is it gonna get right around June thirtieth if you're incurring uh invoices, but you don't have the uh the debt to pay those invoices? Is that, is that an easily easily dealt with issue at the sort of June thirtieth, July first?
Well, what complicates it even more is we start budget hearings in April.
Yep.
So a budget is a plan. And so what staff will do is our best, um, we'll be communicating really strongly with our contractor. And so we'll at least have some sense of what we anticipate spending for the end of this fiscal year. And then we will we, me, I will do my best to sort of forecast what I think next fiscal year will bring. Um, just as a reminder, this is a reimbursement loan. And so we will only take out debt as we need it, when we need it. So our hope is um that we will be able to, that I will be able to provide you with a fairly accurate estimation and plan for next fiscal year because I'll have a fairly, I'll have a pretty good sense by the end of, by the time I propose the budget of what the rest of the fiscal year will look like and then how it will carry into next fiscal year.
Okay.
It won't be easy, but we'll do it.
Got you.
There anything else, Jerry?
Yeah.
Linda?
Nope.
I'm. Brad? Okay, so I would accept a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll move to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental budget as proposed for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second?
Second? Okay, so we're voting to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental budget as proposed, and we've just seen reviewed for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, your passes?
This is kind of a big deal.
That's a big deal. That's another big deal.
Yay.
More.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Big deals to come, but thank you. We're going to be talking about this and aspects of it pretty much every month.
Yes.
I won't say for the rest of our lives now, but I will say.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, so the next item we've got is um geotechnical service contract for the city hall construction. So this item is a request to approve a contract with Rhino One to perform geotechnical services for the city hall project. And Leila is going to give us an overview on that. Please remind me if I missed the chance to invite public. Please remind me if I missed the chance to invite public comment at that point was pause. Whether I need to grab or not, we will pause to see if there's input and then discussion from councils. Please go ahead, Leila.
Perfect, thank you. So yeah, tonight I'm asking just for your approval on a geotechnical services contract. This will be the third in series of contracts. But this contract is to perform construction, observation, and testing throughout construction of City Hall. So as you know, we have a complicated foundation element to this project. And Rhino One has both conducted the initial geotechnical studies, so looking at the ground conditions on the site. They then also did the design element, working with their architect of the foundation. And then what is often happens is that, so we're the owner side of this project. We have our own folks that are inspecting and ensuring that the work that's being completed is up to standard. So this is what this contract will allow us to do. The total contract amount of the previous two and this contract is still below the hundred thousand dollars threshold for direct appointments. If you threw this tonight, we're approximately eighty thousand dollars total investment. These services were included in the last budget that you saw that was updated. So we were anticipating that this would be part of the project. So that said, just asking for you to delegate authority to me to execute that contract to perform the services for the construction of City Hall. And I'm happy to take any questions either now or after you ask for public comment.
Let's start with council first on this. Are there questions or comments you want to make?
This may be a bit more general in nature, and I'm new, so please put me in the right direction. Is a public council session required for us to approve this type of thing?
Great question. And one of the things that we, so we currently don't have any official policies in place that allow or delegate authority to me to assign contracts basically above ten thousand dollars. So I have just taken the practice of bringing those kinds of contracts to city council. Something I hope that we can discuss because I think most city managers have some expenditure authority. And particularly for a project like this where we have known expenses that will be coming up. It creates more efficiency if I'm able to just sign off on those contracts. But because I don't explicitly have that authority, I've always just taken the route of bringing those to council.
And that's the reason for my question. I wouldn't want the council, if not required, to make some of those decisions to be a slowing down or a blocking element, especially when we're working on something as important as City Hall. That there may be occasions you need to execute before we meet in another month. So I would like to propose at some point, we do look at a policy, especially around City Hall or things that are within budget that's already been approved, that we give you the authority to do that. Is that something we would do in a work session?
Kind of fiscal policies that we're looking at as we come, we move forward.
Well, it's a good idea. It's a great question. We could look at it one of two ways. We could look at it just right now with respect to City Hall. And I could just briefly engage with the city attorney about this. Can you just delegate authority to me up to a certain contract amount for that specific project? And then we could have a later discussion as we move into financial policies, sort of larger scale of what would be an appropriate signature authority for me for other contracts.
Right, right.
City Hall is a little cleaner because you'll know roughly what those contracts will be. We have special inspections. We'll have to hire somebody to do. We'll be purchasing furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. We'll have to hire an IT person to help do some of the installation. So there's a number of contracts that will be already kind of thought through and developed. So it's possible, and I think that's the pleasure of your decision, whether or not you would want to split that or have that larger discussion about signature authority for the city manager at this time.
I would prefer to split it, and it's more of a pragmatic workload question than anything else. You've got other, this has been on the back, not complete back burner, but somewhat back burner list for a while. And I know we'll get to it. We'll talk about that in our work plan for the next year. So in the interest of practicality that Brad's bringing up, I think it makes sense to do something of a limited nature right now to give you some approval authority as it relates to City Hall project. And we can have the longer, deeper discussion if necessary about signing authorities and what those should look like. And I have that response based on the idea that that's probably a longer conversation where staff time will go into developing that. And I just think the capacity for that will probably be, to have that will be a little bit later.
Yeah.
So those are my thoughts, Linda, Jerry.
No, I totally agree. So I, so would ninety thousand dollars? I mean, what, what would be in your mind a reasonable? Because we, we have to go to bid at a hundred thousand, so we wanted.
Yeah, you would need to, yeah, yeah. What I could do is a little bit of homework on what the contract amounts are.
Okay.
And I could come back to you with a proposal.
That'd be best.
Next month with the GMP and maybe request that authority at that time. But I could look back, but yeah, I think anything over a hundred thousand, in my experience, especially in a city our size, you warrant counsel.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that threshold may be lower, and I agree with Mayor. I think having further discussion on the larger policy for signature authority makes sense. But I'll be able to, I just don't remember off the top of my head.
That's great.
Don't quote it from that, just we'll get it in numbers. Jerry, do you have anything you want to say on this one? Okay, so thanks for that addition, Brad. We'll have follow up on that. Is anyone ready to make a motion then?
Do you want to take any public comments?
See, I knew I would make that. Could you stand and identify yourself?
My name is Mike. Who, who does Rhino want in this contract? Who will they actually work for? Do they work for the city?
For us.
So why aren't they under the umbrella of the architect?
Well, they do work with the architect, but we contract directly with them.
That makes you responsible to oversee the work.
That's right.
Responsible for their work.
That's right. And our owner's representative takes that role in this instance because she has that subject matter expertise.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you, Mike. Anything else? Anybody online? Okay. I think now it's safe to ask for a motion?
I would propose the motion that we enter the contract with Rhino One as presented.
Okay, so the motion's been, and it's on the screen there for us too, to delegate authority to the city manager to execute a contract with Rhino One to perform construction, observation, and testing services throughout the construction of City Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes? All right. Planning Commission. Leila, do you want to do the, the intro on this one?
Sure, I'd be happy.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so at the last workshop, I meant, I mentioned that due to some discrepancy in records, we determined that Karen Reddick Yurka's term actually expired in December of twenty twenty three. And we've corrected all of our records now, so we feel pretty good about that. So while the city has set forward a very thoughtful committee selection process, which we'll be talking about in a moment, actually, there's two items tonight related to this. In the interest of time, I am requesting the mayor use her authority to directly appoint Ms. Yurka for an interim period of time to continue to serve in that role. And we, when we mentioned this, when I mentioned this at the city council at the work session in January, we actually put the application out the next day. It was open for three weeks. We received one application from Ms. Yurka. But it's important, I think, for the, for the process and the health of the process to go through that. And so, so what I would like, so what we're asking for tonight is for the mayor to consider an interim appointment until the process is complete. That's per our chapter eight of the city, the council rules and regulations. We also need to officially appoint a member of council to serve on the selection committee. Frank Squillo has volunteered to serve on the selection committee for the planning commission. So he would need to be officially appointed by city council per our rules. And then as well, have you confirm the criteria, which has been pretty well vetted and used for the last two planning commission selection processes. And I've highlighted them up here just to kind of remind folks of what that criteria is. So sort of a three-part motion, which is to appoint Karen on an interim basis until the process is complete, to assign a member of council and a planning commission to that committee, and then to confirm your approval of this criteria.
So I'd break it up then because it's, it's the mayor's responsibility to make the appointment?
Yes, yeah.
Karen?
Thanks, yes.
So I would, I won't look at that gaggle again, but I won't, but I'm gonna.
Do we need a motion for that? I mean, that's just, isn't that, I think, I think the mayor can just make that.
So I'm asking that Karen be put in that position provisionally until she goes through the official interview process, which we'll talk about next. So Karen will continue in her role as chair. And then, you're welcome, Lee. Kind of thumbs up in the back of the room from one of our planning commission members who's here tonight. So we also, as Leila said, even though it, it's a kind of odd situation because we've got somebody who's been a, a very good chair of that committee for some time now and a member for a very long time. She's the only person who's applied, but we are going to go through the interview process. That has been set up as part of the process. And we can't know what circumstances might be for future situations. So the best and safest thing is always to go with the process you have laid out. So that's what we'll do, and I'm going to ask now if one of the counselors would be so kind as to be a part of that with Frank.
I'd like to do that.
Okay, so Linda Kazlowski and Frank Squillo will serve as the interview committee for Karen. And shall I ask for a motion for that one then?
Yes, and to approve the criteria. We check all the boxes.
Yes. Okay, so may I have a motion to appoint Frank Squillo and Linda Kazlowski to be the members of the?
There's a question.
Question on the criteria. As a member of UGB, not that I'm planning on applying, but didn't it originally say?
Thank you. That is actually part of the, you can be in the urban growth boundary as well. So thank you.
So that may have been a little cryptic for people who didn't know how to read between those lines.
It's on the application. Number one said, "balance over people that represent people who live or own property in Mantonia or the urban growth boundary."
I cut that off.
Okay, so yes, thank you for, for the clarification.
That's right.
Okay, so are we, I've lost track now where we are. Have we, do we need a second for that or someone actually made that motion?
I'll move to appoint Frank and Counselor Kazlowski and approve the existing criteria.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
I just want to ask a clarification question, and I certainly am not indicating anything in particular uttered and wanted to make sure I understand how these situations work. So Karen's term as a member of the committee expired. At that point, the committee would need to choose another kind of chair. She's not being appointed by you as chair of the committee. She's being appointed as a member of the committee.
Interim appointment as a member.
The committee will, the committee certainly will choose the electors' chair, I assume.
Let's keep it up here for now, please. So.
You know, it's, it's similar to when Dave Dillon's term ended. Now Dave did not reapply for the budget committee. But if he had reapply, he would reapply for membership on the committee.
And then the committee would vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm not trying to create additional, I'm just trying to make sure we understand.
No, it's a good point, if I may. So my, my suggestion would be, so typically the first meeting of the year, the committees select a new chair. So budget committee, that will be the first official budget committee meeting that will occur in March. It would be my recommendation that you are appointing Karen as a member of that committee. And until you're through the process, she is serving as chair. And it would make sense to continue that role. And then they will actually go through an official vote process once the committee is complete. That would be my recommendation.
Well, that's one that makes sense for the circumstances.
Thank you, Jerry. That was a good point.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else we need to do on this one?
I think we're done.
Okay, congratulations, Karen, if you're listening. Somewhere. We'll look forward to your continued good service on that committee. All right, next up, we've got the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. So Leila will talk us through this. We may have some discussion. We're going to be, this is another item that's going to be on the agenda quite a bit now throughout the spring and through the year. This is one of the bodies of work that we've really been looking forward to getting started. And you can, you can kind of feel it coming in the spring now. But Leila will take us through the, some of the details and talk about a really important citizen group that we'll be putting together to help us and help our community with that process. So go ahead, Leila.
Thank you. So yeah, this is, this is a really critical committee. All of our committees are, but this committee will serve a really important role in the development of our comprehensive plan. So I met with the mayor and with John Collier, who is on our planning commission and is the liaison to the comprehensive plan process. And part of that discussion was determining the role and responsibilities of this, this group of folks and the criteria that we would use to select those folks. And so I want to take a moment and just talk a little bit about the role of this committee in the process. So a truly community-driven plan has a robust, you've heard me say this, I'm going to say it again because it's important. Is, is, comes from the ground up, right? It comes from the people in the community. It's really your responsibility to tell the folks that are up here as serving as your ambassadors, frankly, what you want to see in your city and how you want to see your city grow. So I think the best comprehensive plans are founded in community engagement. That typically happens in a number of different ways. It happens in large town hall meetings, through community surveys, through all the different ways that we can try to solicit community feedback. And then we will also have a dedicated professional team of folks taking that information and distilling it into goals and policies that will form the foundation of the comp plan. The Public Advisory Steering Committee will be the first group of folks that sees what comes out of that. So if any of you participated in the Town Hall series I did in twenty twenty two, you probably are familiar with what I'm talking about in terms of taking a bunch of information, like two hundred pages, and distilling it down to like four, right? So that's what's going to have to happen for our comp plan as well. We're going to get a lot of data and then we have to sift through that data. What's legal, what's not, what can be possible, all those things. What this committee do will play a really instrumental role in working with the consultant team and staff and being that sort of bridge between the community at large, the consultant team and staff, and then ultimately, when it gets up to the decision makers. So they play a very critical role in the comprehensive plan. So they will be the first to see our public outreach plan and provide feedback on that plan. So we'll revise it so that we have a group of community members saying, you know, working with professionals, say, okay, yeah, we like that, but in our town, we think these things are important and you should amend these things. There's some examples of that. They will review and comment on key work products. So once we hire a consultant team, we'll get a timeline, milestone calendar, a lot of information. And we'll be communicating that regularly to the council and the community of what are the steps to get us to that final document. And they will be the first to see it, to say, like, did we get this right? Did we distill this information in a way that makes sense and is honoring and reflective of what the community said? Before it goes up to the planning commission, then they'll have their go at it. And then once they're satisfied with it, then we take it to the decision makers. So they play a really instrumental role. They act as liaison, and when I say specific constituency, I'm not saying that we're going to select someone from this group and this group and this group. But we do expect that people that apply and participate on this committee will have. will have connections with many organizations throughout the community. And we want to get in and get our outreach, not just to be town halls, but to work with many and varied volunteer and other organizations and other just groups of folks. And so having that kind of insight is really instrumental in creating a successful community outreach process. We're hoping they'll help us host public events so that when we have a town hall, it's just not me and my consultant running around. There's actually people, uh, your peers, folks within the community, educated and able to talk to you about what we're trying to accomplish. And we being the collective, we all of us here. And they serve as ambassadors. So when you run into in the grocery store like, hey, have you taken a survey online yet? No, you totally should. It's really important. Your future is at stake. You got something to say. So we're going to be looking for folks who really want to help us get the word out and get um folks engaged and be champions of that of that work. Um, because they're going to have a really important and critical role in the process. So so there's a lot there and it's it's I've I've managed a number of different advisory committees and I've always found them to be um just, I think, one of the keys to success in implementing a comp plan. The most recent one I did was in Milwaukee. We had a CPAC, was our Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee. And they took us to task on stuff and it was great because it really leveled up the work. And by the time we got to the adoption process, it gave the decision makers, I think, the support and the information they needed to make the decisions that were before them. So the proposed makeup of this committee um is we want four at-large community members. So that's just anyone who lives in Manzanita or the UGB. And we have some refinements of that and I'll get into that in a minute. We also want members that represent businesses, maybe a nonprofit, and an employee. So we have not just resident perspectives, but we have a lot of people come into our town and make our town what it is. And we need their perspective. Uh, we'll have uh Mayor Stock will be our council liaison. John Collier will be our planning commission liaison. We have backup liaison. So Council President Kazlowski is our backup. And then um Bert on the planning commission is our backup for the planning commissioner. And they'll just be there to help facilitate the discussion. But really, the community members will be the driving force in this in this committee. And then we will bring in uh technical experts as needed. So folks from the county, we had some county partners and we start talking about things like utilities. We'll bring in T-Pug. Um, we'll also be engaging with ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So as we need folks with technical expertise, uh, we'll be bringing those folks in on as needed basis. But the the founding kind of group will be the council liaison, the planning commission liaison, and then the seven members that are from our community. And I would like to note too that folks that are either a business or nonprofit or work here don't necessarily have to live here. Um, but the folks that are the at-large community members, we want living in the city or in the urban growth boundary. Because the comp plan doesn't just cover the city boundaries, it covers our entire city, which is inclusive of the UGB. So we spent a good amount of time on this criteria. And what we'll be looking for are members that represent sort of a diverse cross-section demographically. Now includes age, gender, ethnicity, tenure. And when I talk about tenure, I'm like, are you a renter or an owner? It'd be nice to have those, that range of perspective. Um, we want to see about full and part-time residents. Uh, the geography, like we're a small town, but we actually have kind of very different physical makeups of our urban um system here. And so we would like to see kind of a geographic distribution of folks from across the city um and folks that live both within the UGB and within the city boundary. We want folks that have a strong interest in representing and serving the broader interests of the community. Not their own self-interest, but this greater public interest. And I I think we will have no problem finding folks that do that. This is town is rich with people who have that perspective. Um, we need folks who can work in a collaborative and respectful manner. Um, I've been doing comp plan work from 20 years and there are hard conversations that come up. And it isn't to say that those aren't conversations that don't need to happen. They absolutely need to happen, but we need to be able to do it with an open mind. We need folks with solid listening skills, the ability to hear and appreciate multiple views and perspectives, and then ultimately reach consensus. And consensus isn't always necessarily agreement, right? It's like, all right, the larger perspective is this. And so I'm going to get behind that and I'm going to support that. Because we've heard all of these things and we have to now get to a point where we can lay this stuff down on paper. Um, we need folks who can objectively review and provide input on both qualitative and quantitative information. So we need folks who understand facts, who know how to ask for facts and who can distill and sort of, you know, there's going to be some technical information involved in this. And so to be able to interpret that, understand it and how it affects the broader perspective. And we want folks with a broad range of skill sets and perspectives. We want to try to get kind of everyone. I set up a committee for um the housing code work we did in Milwaukee. And we wanted to make sure we had somebody who was really adamantly all for parking because we wanted that perspective, even though the state law told us we had to reduce parking. And what that did was is it allowed us to build the code in a way that included that perspective. Now, they may not have gotten everything we wanted out of it, but we were able to address some of those concern in a much more deeper and meaningful way. And then they supported that as the project advanced into um adoption. So what I'm asking today is I can slowly the criteria up is for city council. Um, and this is again under chapter eight of our rules and regs, that council approves a criteria. And if council does approve the criteria, I put a draft of the application in tonight's packet. Um, we will post that on Friday and we'll keep it open for a period of three weeks. And um then everybody who applies will be interviewed by myself. Um, I will, I will be on the committee with uh Mayor Stock and John Collier. And then we will, from what I hope to see is a rich um a number of applications, uh, select the folks that will be on that committee. And I anticipate that uh happening in April, which is also when I anticipate bringing to council the selection of our consultant team. So with that, I will close my mouth.
Good job.
Yeah, so as it relates to the the criteria specifically, and I guess if you have other comments, but to council, any feedback or questions, comments? Straightforward?
Yeah, it is straightforward. I I I wonder, I I wish we could have more citizens, you know, four. It's it's going to be hard to fill all the boxes to create the kind of diversity in terms of geography and age and background when you only have four slots. So that's just, that's a challenge and I, you know, I think we should take it real seriously. There'll be plenty of other opportunities for non-members of the committee to participate
Yes.
in this process.
Yeah.
Suggesting otherwise, but I I do think it's going to be harder to squeeze all of that diversity of thought and perspective and geography into four slots.
I agree.
I suppose, you know, one of the options we always have is we'll look and have the experience of seeing who applies. And just see how much of the job we can do with, it's almost like a puzzle you're putting together because no one person can, just one attribute, they come with many things. So I I wonder, could we, hearing that concern, could we reserve the right, Leila, to a- adjust up perhaps the number if we find that that number is just too constraining compared to the applications we get? But also, of course, and I mean, I know you know this, we're trying to make it a manageable, workable number for ongoing meetings. And, you know, I I want to also say you you don't have to be somebody who wants to talk to everybody at the grocery store about things to apply. So I'm always watching out for the introverts. Um, introverted personalities are also welcome. There are many ways to sell things in the community. Um, so yeah, but we really are looking for a broad range of experience and perspective. And I think I have a lot of hopes for this project as a way to also um improve our communication and our engagement broadly. This gives us a really nice platform. It's something people care about deeply. And it's, it'll be engaging, it'll be done well. And I think we'll get a chance to work with each other in possibly a different way. Um, and I think it'll be, I think it's going to be a real opportunity for the the city. So I'm, I'm very excited about it, but yes.
Um, no, I agree. I think it's going to be a transformative experience for everyone who participates. But I would just add, and I totally hear you, I think absolutely, it's the discretion of the the committee and the council to decide the size of that group. But um you also have seven members of your community on your planning commission and you have five members of your community here. And so this is just another layer of that to help refine that as it goes through um the decision-making process. So.
Okay, well, I think uh I'd like to see, are there any comments from the public who are here tonight? See two hands, Kristo, identify yourself and where you reside.
I'm curious as to, I guess, how long a process is this?
I think the comprehensive plan I'm anticipating will take, we're anticipating getting this into adoption June, summer-ish of 2025. So I expect it to be a 12 to 18 month process. And that can shift depending on how complicated.
And back here?
Uh, Mike Turner again. Leila, could you just describe briefly who's actually responsible for the wording of the comprehensive plan? Is it literally this committee? Or some combination of them with the consultant?
It's that. So it'll be, it'll be kind of all of it anyway, um, in my experience.
Ultimately, the council approves the final wording.
That's right.
And they could even tweak it as they go along.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah. Yeah, we start with the community, we get lots of words from you. And we filter that through our jargon and comp plans and meeting of state goals, et cetera, et cetera. Pass it through this committee, it goes to planning commission, then it goes to the council. And at every step of the way, um, there are refinements and improvements that are made.
Okay, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Leila Salmon, Manzanita. And this is really a question, is the, as a city in Oregon, is the plan or sections of the plan subject to any state rules or oversight? And if so, will there be training from the state or the League of Oregon Cities in uh parameters for the committee members?
That's a great question. And so, yes, we are, um, the comprehensive plan falls under the 19 statewide planning goals. Um, it's a requirement under Senate Bill 100. Um, so we will be adhering to those requirements. And I think probably some of you, I know all of you participated in um, we had a work session with uh Brett Estes from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And he reviewed sort of, I think, 17 of the statewide goals applied to us. We don't have the Willamette Greenway, for example. Um, and so we will be very closely following state law with respect to um the the statewide land use goals. And just kind of quickly, the state sort of says, here's what you need to accomplish. Now, you all figure out how to accomplish this within your own cities. And so we will have to abide by that. So I imagine the first meeting or two about the comp plan will be orienting folks to to that, both in the committee but also in the communities. And if you haven't seen it, I think we have a planning 101 with uh Brett online. I'll see if I can find that and push that out.
There'll be a lot of support from somebody who wants to put the time and make the investment into it, yeah. Anything online at all? Anything else in the room? Okay, could we go to the motion?
I'll move to approve the criteria with a slight amendment that council reserves the right to add more people to the committee based on applications received for the Comprehensive Plan Public Advisory Steering Committee.
I second.
Second. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Have to say it, post, okay? Okay, well, good. Thank you very much. And um, any questions at all? If anybody is listening here tonight or online and you'd like to know more about this and you want to understand if it's a a fit for you, or you have some questions, feel free to reach out. Probably Leila is our most knowledgeable person right now. But also John Collier and myself are white people to that committee. We're both learning as we go on this, but we'll be glad to help and talk if that's useful to you in any way. Okay, thanks very much. Okay, moving down the agenda. Now we're coming to budget committee appointments.
I know the council has had the opportunity to read the applications received as well as the memo I issued with the summary and a recommendation um out of the interest of time. And it's one of my pet peeves when someone reads something to me, I can read, so I'm not going to read the whole summary to you. But uh, the selection committee was comprised of Chip Greening, who is part of the current Manzanita Budget Committee, myself representing city council, and Nina Christ, who is uh staff and serves as our accounting manager. We had two positions open. One of those was to fill uh the position that was vacated by Catherine when she was appointed to city council for a term of two years. The other one is for a position that expired, so it's for a term of three years. Uh, fortunately for the two positions, we were lucky enough to get two qualified candidates into those position uh to interview. Uh, the two candidates are Joy Nord and Jeffrey Sunshine. And uh they are both uh quite a long career, quite a bit of experience around budgets and financing. You both have distinctly different uh backgrounds, which I think brings a good diversity. Um, so I'll read my recommendation. Um, well, before I do, um, both uh Joy is here in person and I believe he was planning to be that Jeffrey is joining us online. So once I read my recommendation, if the council has any questions for the individuals that have applied, uh, you'll have the opportunity to do so. Uh, the selection committee recommends to the Manzanita City Council to approve a resolution making the following appointments to the budget committee. Joy Nord for a term of three years commencing March 1st, 2024 and concluding March 1st, 2027. And Jeffrey Sunshine to complete the term vacated by Catherine Stock commencing March 1, 2024 and concluding March 1, 2026. So any questions for our candidates?
Is Jeffrey on the line? Do you know?
Jeffrey, are you?
He is.
Yeah.
Jeffrey says Manzanita. I don't know if that's him.
You can raise his hand if it's him.
Jeffrey, uh, Sunshine, just raise your hand if you're online.
That's a good.
Too bad, I would have liked to have vetted him.
Yeah, you hear me now?
There we go. There he is. There he is.
Okay. Yeah, my little icons are below the bottom of the screen, so I was kind of guessing where the microphone was. But uh, I'm here, I've participated, well, I haven't participated, but I've listened in uh to the whole evening's program.
Terrific. Well, thank you. And um, I guess I better wait to congratulate till we make the movement and it's official. Nice way to proceed. So could I entertain a motion for?
No questions from anybody for our candidates?
No, I I looked at the uh applications. Uh, it's always good when you only have two candidates for two slots, that they're both.
You're better qualified, yes.
And I, you know, I I would note that these are two individuals who are relatively new to the community.
Uh, this is great.
And, you know, new to uh the city government. So I think that's a breadth of fresh air uh and and where he qualified. So I think it's a whole lot more to do this late hour.
Right. Well, I've had the opportunity to work with Joy and I think she's going to be an exceptional addition to the budget committee. And I look forward to meeting Jeffrey, uh, but his background looks excellent.
Very good.
All right.
Looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
I'll move to accept the nominations of Jeffrey and Joy for the budget committee.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Right? Yeah, congratulations to you both. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Jeffrey. So I want to uh talk a bit about time. So I want to talk a bit about time for a minute. So it's 8:20. Where do we hit the point where we need to extend a meeting? Are we still in good shape?
Yeah, technically nine.
Okay. Do we, would it be, I'm just conscious of the fact also that the two candidates have been sitting for quite some time. Do we, can we offer a short pause, a little, like literally the classic four-minute break, just to move and get a little energy going? And then we'll have our two candidates, Tom Campbell and Connie Burton, come up and get themselves situated. And then we'll do the last and very important item on our agenda, which is the application for the open council position. Is that okay? So watch the clock. We're all adults. Four minutes-ish.
I'm going to put time.
Okay.
Dollar per minute, per minute you're laying on.
Yeah. All right, welcome back, everyone, from our brief interlude. All right. So the council is now inviting the applicants for the open position on City Council for the public interview process, which is required by Section 33, the Manzanita City Charter. Notice of the council vacancy was posted on January 4th on the city's website and in three public places. Applications were accepted until February 4. We've received two applications from Mr. Tom Campbell and Ms. Connie Burton, who were seated there in that, I don't know, awkward spot or some kind of spot. And we just, this is, yeah.
We were just talking about, we really wish that it could have been set up over there so we wouldn't be talking to you and are back to the awkward spot.
Been through this a couple of times.
Yeah.
The overriding premise.
That's what it is.
Well, but it's more than that. The overriding premise is that we've got the responsibility for the interview. So that's really on us. And so the connection, although I'm all about the whole community always, the connection that's most important right now is between us and you. So that's why it's set up that way.
Understood.
We're glad that you're both present. That's nice. Nice to be back in person. So we'll conduct an interview, each of the counselors, using the process that Linda developed the last couple of times we've had to do this. Each of us has got a question. We can ask follow-up questions. And then at the end, we may also do some additional follow-up. We'll just kind of see how the flow, how the flow goes with both of you, okay? So I would want to say, before we start, and I'll take the lead question. I am really, this is one of those times when you're really pleased that you have something difficult to do. You're both highly qualified. You're both have demonstrated, demonstrated commitment to the community, words and action. And that means a lot. And that also means that that's challenging. And we've always remarked, and I've been on that side of the chair myself, it's challenging to do an interview like this in public. It's challenging to be interviewed in public, but that's part of the rules of the game for doing this. So I know I speak, can speak for all of us. We're all very, very appreciative of the commitment to make an application and to be here tonight. So I want to thank you. Keeping with our gratitude theme, I guess. I want to express my gratitude for that before we start, okay?
Thank you.
So we'll start. And I guess I'd like Connie to answer first and then Tom. So what specific experience or background has prepared you to be a City Council member?
I've had some experience with governmental or organizational groups. I've been on a couple of boards. Each time of service was a couple of years. I also served as an ombudsman as part of the state system that is outreach for seniors, long-term care. And it is more of a governmental job than just, it's volunteer, but it's more rules and regulations than other volunteer boards. And I learned different skills in each one. But most of my skills in dealing with people come from running my husband's dental practice for almost 40 years. I did the business part. I did a lot of the ambassador part. And I gradually learned how to make people comfortable in an uncomfortable situation. I'm not going to say all those little things we hear about pulling teeth, et cetera, because I don't believe them to be true. But when, when you're welcoming someone and you need to serve them and they need to do hard things with their own money or the state's money, because we saw Medicaid patients on purpose, you are also a civil servant in some ways to your neighbors. Sometimes to people who are known in the community, sometimes to people who are even hidden in the community. And I think over all those years, I gained skills, people skills. Also, I'm really good with details. And I like working for a rules-based situation.
Thank you, Connie. Tom?
Well, it's getting late in the night. And one of my friends counseled me that my ans, I can be kind of wordy. He counseled me that I should keep my answers short and to the point. So I brought my phone up here. I'm tempted to use my stopwatch to make sure that I'm not going on. But I've got a lot of different things in my background that I've done. And mostly it's been volunteer work. But two of the things I think have given me experience that's similar to the job that would be that of a city councillor. One was serving on the board of the Green River Community College, which is now Green River College, because they offer advanced baccalaureate degrees. I served on that board for six or seven years. And during that period of time, I ended up being the board chair for three of those years. In that period of time, we conducted a presidential search. Our president of over 30 years retired after one year of my service. And so we had to go out and find somebody new. We had capital projects. We purchased the property and built a third campus for the college during my term. And of course, the kinds of things that you do as a councillor or a council leader is to work with the president of the college then to set the agenda. And so I have some understanding about how to conduct a meeting and how to set the meeting up in the, in the way that everybody benefits. But I actually think that my experience as the president of the Auburn Rotary Club is more like what I'd be called upon to do here just because of the nature of Rotary and the nature of the citizenry here. In Rotary, you have to be a professional person to become a part of the club. And they expect that there's going to be a diverse group because you're admitted according to your profession. And the people in Manzanita that seem to be the citizens here are mostly retired. And they're here because they've enjoyed success in their personal lives and their professional lives. And so it's bringing these really strong personalities together that was always such a challenge as a Rotary president to, to put people together to work towards a common goal. And I think that that's one of the real challenges that we face here in Manzanita.
Would you be more specific about your approach to doing that and how that worked when you, when you did that with Rotary?
Well, now I'm going to get wordy. So I had one thing in particular that happened when I was the president of Rotary. Rotary requires you, as you're becoming the president, to go to a president-elect training seminar. They call it PETS. And so I go to the PETS and we're all told then to create our vision for what your year as president is going to be like. And Rotary was starting to experience difficulties in grooming new members. And I felt that our club in particular had a real problem with diversity. We had the Muskegon Indian Reservation within our Keshment District, and we had nobody in the Rotary Club that had any association with the tribe whatsoever. And so I came back from my PETS seminar and got my board together and said, this is my goal for the year is I want to enhance membership and I want to make it more diverse. Well, one of my members said, well, if you want to make the membership more diverse, the way we open the meeting is counterproductive because we always open with the Pledge of Allegiance, a patriotic song, and an invocation. And every year, every, every time it happened, well, it was God Bless America. It was the pledge with, one nation under God. And inevitably, the person that delivered the invocation ended it with, in Jesus' name, we pray amen. And she pointed out that that's not a very welcoming way of opening your meeting if you're looking for a diverse group. We used to meet in a church. And so this took the conversation in a direction that I really had never anticipated. But it was an important thought nonetheless. And it deserved to see the light of day. So we ended up giving it that. And it created a terrible, terrible uproar within the club. But ultimately, what I decided to do was put it to a vote of the club. And I knew I was going to lose because we were going to try to, you know, vanilla the opening of the, of the, of the meeting. And we had some members that were very upset. But it needed to get the light of day. We, then the, the club voted about two to one to maintain the invocation and the opening as it, as it was. But then I talked to the district governor for where our club was located. And he helped me find an approved Rotary Handbook of Invocations, which were more vanilla. And so we instituted that. And inevitably, the local reverend and pastor who delivered the invocation would end it with, in Jesus' name, and we pray amen. And so I didn't change a whole lot, but we had a good discussion. And the club knew that we were going to move in a way towards getting more diversity.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom. What do you see as the main challenges and opportunities facing the city?
Well, I think that there are too many challenges and opportunities to count. And I really have a hard time saying that I think that the building of City Hall is more important than adopting a solid comprehensive plan. There's just so many things that need to be accomplished. And this group is going to have a lot of work ahead of it. The one thing, when I started telling people that I was interested or that I was going to apply to City Council, I got a lot of, why in the world would you do that? And I heard a lot of things that were derogatory about City Council. And so I think that the biggest challenge that City Council has right now is to reestablish faith amongst the electorate of your integrity. I've, the stuff that I've heard is just offensive. And I just don't believe that these people understand how honest and diligently you're working towards a goal that will help everybody in this community. And so I think that doing that, you know, I'm a little bit anxious to see the next election day because right now, council's getting a lot of criticism about everybody's appointed and nobody's elected, and you don't really reflect the voice of the community. And so I think it's important for, if I'm chosen, to get out in the community and just challenge that idea, you know, to, to let people know, I'm here. And, you know, if you've got an issue, then you're going to need to bring it to me. And if you change my mind, I'm going to bring it to, to council. And if you don't, I hope you'll listen to me and understand that I'm working to try to help you. And that's what I think is a big challenge.
Thank you. Thanks for your honesty, by the way. It's helpful. Connie, what do you see as the main challenges and opportunities for the city?
I think that communication amongst us and out to the broader community is. A big focus. I think you folks have already acknowledged that. I think we need to do the conversations with councillors. When I attended them, they were. Amazingly helpful in answering questions. Also, getting to know the people that also showed up. And showing up for other types of meetings that we've had in the community. You get more of a sense for where people are at, like Tom has also heard. This one doesn't like this, that one is upset about that. But my main focus would be communicating, not just from us to them and them to us, but all together. So appoint more people to more committees. Give more people a chance to feel validated. It's not about. One idea or one appointment. It's about moving the city forward and working with this. Very sharp lady and supporting the hard work that she does. The council directs her, but without her.
So one of the things I've noticed about you, Connie, is that you do participate. In a lot of the meetings, you've been the mayor's Mondays, the conversations, you're almost at every council meeting. So. As a city council member, what would be the role you would take? What would you do as a city council, understanding kind of both sides? Be a little more specific about what you would do to bring this community together.
Well, my approach would be I'd be a worker bee, not a queen bee, because that's always the. The way I approach things. But I also. Can be an ambassador and a diplomat. And. Speak truth to those who. Like social media more than they like the truth. I'm not afraid of that kind of situation. And that would, I think, be valuable. I would love to get involved with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group. If you select me, then maybe I could still have a role with that. Revenue diversification really interests me. I just like the inner workings of all of it, which maybe is a little weird. I don't know. Is that a personality trait?
That helps. That gives me a sense. Thank you.
Okay, now next, I think we start with Connie on this. Please share with us your understanding of the role that short-term rental revenue plays in Manzanita's finances. And how concerned are you, if at all, with the degree to which the city depends on STR revenue?
I understand that short-term rental revenue has been. The biggest factor for a while. I tried to just do some research on my own without reaching out to any of you. About when this gradually shifted from less than fifty percent to more than fifty percent. And I went back to, I think it was some things I could pull up around 2005. And maybe it was 2004, there were about a hundred short-term rentals. They may not have been called that at the time. But I don't imagine that that was a big, huge budget item at that point. So. I think we've gradually gone more that way because that is the commerce we have in this city. I don't see a major problem with it, although I do agree that keeping it within. Keeping short-term rental moratorium in place might be good for the good of the city and the livability. But when Mr. Stone applied for a position on city council. And was saying that he would like to pull it all the way back and have very few. That really. Felt unrealistic to me. I think you need to be realistic about here's what you have now. Look at the other things that might be options and. Continue to research and then act on it as soon as possible to kind of create a shift. But I don't see a major problem with short-term rental revenue being what we rely on. We're a. We're a beach community. We're not. A steel mill community.
Tom, you want me to repeat the question?
I printed them out, so. So. I think that revenue or income diversification is really a key for the city going forward. And. The thing that pointed that out was the advent of COVID. If we were so dependent upon the income stream from. The short-term rental, that when we shut the city down, all of a sudden. We didn't have that stream of income and we didn't have another stream of income really to fall back on. And so. It's it's I consider it a huge concern. I like what I'm seeing. It is the direction of council and the city manager in trying to create. Various income streams and also to create a so-called like rainy day fund. So that we aren't stuck in a pickle in the event of something that. You know, like COVID could happen, but COVID is a catastrophe. And so, you know, it's not like that's going to happen time and time again. But, you know. My wife and I own a short-term rental here in town. And we just got contacted by a management company saying rentals are really off in the month of January. And we want your permission to reduce the amount that we've stated as a minimum rental fee. And so the factors that they're looking at is. Post-COVID people are deciding that they're ready to engage in international travel again. That they're going to other places than the beach because the beach was easy and we're kind of tired of it and. And so there's other factors that go into what drives people's desire to come to Manzanita. And then the other part of it is, is that. I think that what I hear from the people that I talk to on the street. Is that, you know, if we continue to build and build towards an economy built around short-term rental income. We're going to start getting a lot of people that are dissatisfied with the small village concept that we've always. Felt was important to us. I like seeing families walking around and enjoying their their vacations. But there's a certain point where, I mean, even the businesses in town are saying, I just wish they'd go away. So. Having diversification in the revenue stream, I think, is is key for this city going forward.
Tom, this question's back to you and. It's three parts. So it's actually sort of three questions. If you're appointed to council, it is very likely you will need to learn about areas of government that will be new to you. Which areas do you think will be your biggest learning curve? How will you approach gaining the knowledge you'll need to make the best decisions?
Well. So. In my in my day job, I was a lawyer. And so every case was different. Every time I opened a file, I had something that I had to learn. And you get a lot of training when you go through law school and the spending your time as a lawyer. Because the first thing that you have to do is you have to learn the facts. And once you've become comfortable that you know what the facts are, then you need to know the rule. Is in in our training, we are given an acronym that's called I RAC. And that is Issue, Rule, Analysis and Conclusion. I have a lot of learning to do about what the rules are. Earlier in the year, I applied or last year I applied to be on the Planning Commission. I read the Comprehensive Plan. I read what Nahalem has done towards that. I read Wheeler's version. I Mark Beach sent me a pamphlet that was put out by the state. So that I read that too. And it's that kind of learning that you just have to do. I really feel like the that the scrutiny that council is getting right now is all on dollars and cents. And so when I realized that this was an application I was gonna make. I started reading the budget and I realized I've not always been a good numbers guy. So I was gonna need some help with that. So I called Dave Dillon. And asked him to help me through it a little bit and I'm working my way through that now. And I see that it's gonna be something that. The budget is gonna be whoever's the councillor is gonna be have to immediately conversant in what's going on with the budget. So, you know, you just. You you absorb as much as you can. You try to, you know. Narrow your focus so that you can be effective. And hopefully you come up with the right conclusions.
Connie, do you want me to read the question again?
Go ahead.
If you're appointed to council, it is very likely you will need to learn about areas of government that will be new to you. Which areas do you think will be your biggest learning curve? And how will you approach gaining the knowledge you'll need to make the best decisions?
I also have been reading through some things, but over a period of time since I've been interested in. Going to meetings. I went to mayor's meetings quite frequently and asked questions that weren't answered. And so I would try to find out the answer before the next mayor meeting or the next opportunity with. Conversations with councillors. Because. There was a little more to know. Or another piece in another local newspaper. I did quite a bit of reading about the things the public sees. But then I started going through the Comprehensive Plan. Looking at the budget because I did apply for the Budget Committee early last year and wasn't selected. But realized what that process was and how much intense time that took. So I feel over the last year, I've learned a lot about. The the dollars and cents. The local politics. The ordinances, there's about, I think there are thirty-two ordinances. I've looked through some of them. It's legal language. That I'm getting used to. Not our everyday language, right? I mean, maybe for some, but. And reading through the Comprehensive Plan and realizing how. Some of the the product is. Really not updated. I'm concerned about, you know, how many steps, by how many. How many meetings is this going to take to distill it down to what we need? But I'm interested in that process. I'm a worker bee. So if you choose me, you'll get a worker bee. And. That's what I have to offer.
Thank you.
Okay. So the procedure, the way that it works now is that each of us up here have got a ballot. So we'll take a minute. We'll fill that ballot out. Our assistant here will pick those up, Nancy, and then we'll see what our results are and see if we have a majority vote or not. So, okay.
We have two for Connie and two for Tom. We need to do another vote. Has to be at least three to one.
Yes. So let's carry. So I'm gonna, Leila, what do I need to request some time to extend the meeting?
Just ask for a motion to extend the meeting and you can.
May I have a motion to extend the meeting until quarter passed?
Absolutely.
I'll second.
All in favor? Yes, okay. Were you going to say something?
No.
Okay, so so could we have quiet, please? We haven't had this up until now. So this is a testament to the quality of the two people that we're talking about and talking with here tonight. So. I'm gonna, I guess, ask it this way. Are there other questions that council would like to ask that would help? Help clarify, help you look at things a little differently, help you consider or confirm?
Follow up on a question or an answer, I should say, that. Tom gave, but I think you both sort of touched on this and it is a, it has been a. Dominant area of concern for the council, that is, how do we. Deal with. Different sources of information about what's going on in the city and. How we're doing our job, whether we're doing our job. I think we're all. Willing and able to accept criticism in a in this role. But we've been accused of a lack of integrity and we've been accused of wrongdoing that borders on. If not criminality, certainly malfeasance. And I don't see any of that on this side of the table. And it's really difficult to do this job. In that environment. But you mentioned that you've come in contact with those feelings out there in the community. And I think you essentially did the same, Connie, and. We need to figure out a way to continue to do the job we're doing. Despite. What we're hearing from some folks in the community. But we don't want to just write off the general sentiment behind that misinformation. That misinformation is rooted in deep dissatisfaction among a lot of people in this town with the way things. Are going. I think a lot more people in this town are pretty pleased with the way things are going. But we don't get to just ignore the minority. We also can't cater to a minority that is ill-informed or misinformed. So. I guess if you could both. Address again, to some extent. How you would take on that challenge. You know, on the one hand, we regularly hear praise for our city manager. And we're doing our best to keep up with her.
It's challenging.
But then on the other hand, we hear that, you know, we. Conduct shell games with the budget and we're doing all kinds of things behind the scenes, shady deals here and there and. So anyway, I've talked more than I should be talking. I'm asking you guys to talk to it. So. Tom, you, in your answer, I think you said. That we have to do. Something to restore our integrity with the. Community. I and I think I don't think you were suggesting we lack integrity. So anyway, could you expand on that and maybe Connie also?
Okay, well. You know, the criticisms that you hear, I referenced it earlier is that it's a it's a board that's largely unelected. And I said in my answer that I'm kind of anxious to see November roll around again, just so that we can cleanse ourselves of that. I think the council's done a really great job. I think the council's done a really great job with the conversations with counselors and the Monday mayor's meetings. And there's a limit to how much you can humanly do. If somebody's got their mind made up that that's what it is, and they don't want to hear other facts, then it's really hard to break down that barrier. But, you know, it's one, it's so hard to deal with these kinds of issues without then engaging in further confrontation that ends up being kind of self-defeating. And so, but again, don't want to go down that trap. The last election series, there was a lot of "I'm listening" being said. And I hear a lot of people thinking that they're not being heard. And I don't know how you correct that until we get around to another election. But, you know, there, there are people that are voters in the city that I think are pretty satisfied, and there's others that are outside of the city who have involvement. We were talking about this, when you're talking about getting people within the urban growth boundary to participate in committees. And they, and they feel like they're not being heard because they're not casting ballots in the city. I've heard business owners who don't live in the city feel like they're not being heard, even though they're the heart and soul of a lot of what you see up and down Lannetta. And so, you know, all you can do is make yourself available and let them know that if they've got something that they want to talk about, then bring it to me, and I'll listen to it. You know, and I may have an answer. I always tell people downstairs when we're doing tours of the museum, "I don't know" is an acceptable answer. I'm not sure that that is an acceptable answer right now, because everybody wants an answer. And so when you're asking me the question about, how do I learn about the areas of government? Well, I'm going to have to be a quick study and have answers. It's just really the way I think it's got to be, is I got to be out there. I've got to know the answers, and I've got to let people know that I've studied it up and I'm really doing my best just to try to do something good for you. And it is a volunteer job after all.
Well, since you, you've mentioned the election a couple of times, I'm going to ask you, sorry to put you on the spot, but are you likely, if you were appointed, are you likely to stand for election?
Well, actually, I was telling Connie, if I got appointed, I'd like her to run for election. But that's a decision I haven't made yet. One of the inducements that some people have held out to me is it's not that long till the term is over with. And so, you know, I guess it's going to be one of those things that I'm going to get my hands dirty, and I'm going to figure out whether I'm finding this to be a rewarding experience. If I'm not, then I probably shouldn't be in the, in the position. And so I go into it expecting the best and planning for the worst. So I equivocate, I'm sorry.
Connie, what do you think?
I would approach it with my eyes open. I know about negativity. I've been in rooms with negativity. I've talked to negative people. But as a team, we move forward. We don't, yeah, we listen to it, but we also listen to the good noise, the bad noise, the good noise. But we have our agenda in front of us, and it is an agenda. There are rules, there are steps, there are ordinances, there are policies, there are big things to build, and you do it step by step. And when negative people are negative, you make sure that they know about conversations with counselors. If they're not willing to come speak to you in person, then how can you get an understanding? If they just create, you know, bad feeling and not good facts, it's not, it's not legit to me. So legitimate is participate. Show up, whether you're in a paid position or a volunteer position, like all you folks. Show up, speak from the heart, don't carry grudges.
I have a follow-up question. Guess we'll start with Connie, since we started with Tom last time. We've heard during the interview process and otherwise from the general community that we could do a better job of communicating to the community, just in general, what's going on, what's happening with different projects. What are some specific ideas that you have that would improve that communication process from the council to the community at large?
Does that one to me? I find Manzanita Minute to be very valuable. I know that it's a whole nother thing to put on Leila and her staff if it's coming directly from them. Maybe there's a way that some volunteers could get involved in doing a communications group to support that. We had, some people know about Manzanita Today. I don't know how wide the circulation is, but I've always found it to be very informative and very balanced as far as historical enrichment. It's wonderful. The newspapers are fine, but I think things that we, that we produce either right out of the city manager's office or sanctioned by the city council are much more valuable than the buck stops there.
Well, I think the council and mayor are doing what they can do. And, you know, like Connie says, there's various news sources, and I think Manzanita Today is really a stellar product. But there's a certain part of it where I don't think there's anything that we're going to do that's going to change some minds, because when the council offered up the bond issue, and that became such a vitriolic issue, and the walkaway that happened afterwards, there's some wounds that just don't seem to want to heal. And I think that the only thing that's going to make it actually better is time. And unfortunately, I, I, I'm resigned to that, I guess. You know, you do everything you possibly can do to give people the right information. But if they're close-minded, then you just, you've got to accept that and move forward. It's a whole new council then, except for Linda, then was here.
They're on me, so.
Yeah, I'm not mad at you. So hopefully, you know, the city starts to mend over time. But that was, that was a difficult, difficult time to go through. And I don't know whether it's, you know, the national political scene that creates such a, you know, ugliness about us and how that trickles down to the state level. And here you had the Supreme Court just had to make a decision about what to do with walkaway legislators. I mean, it's just everywhere. And so, time.
Should we take another vote?
We have to take a vote because we're running out of time. I just, you know, I wish there was a way to have an open deliberation to, to help us help move from two-two to three-one or four-o. I mean, I do think we have had now several panels in recent meetings. And this is a uniquely difficult choice, because, which is a good thing to have. We haven't always had that dilemma in past panels, from my perspective. I mean, I think that it's interesting. I, I don't think, I don't think we are doubting at all the sincerity of these two individuals or their professional qualifications to at least meet the expertise that's assembled up here right now. That's, that's not a bad issue. I think what we're all dealing with is, you know, we know that this job has become more complicated lately because of the the divide in the community that keeps coming up in the conversation. And I guess from my perspective, I'm just trying to figure out who can best help us with that ongoing dilemma. And, and who can, you know, help, help lead us to a point where we do have a vibrant, but a healthy election season in a few months, where people are actually talking about the challenges in the city and about the issues in the city. And, you know, we are all operating on a similar set of facts, if not the same set of facts. And so I'm trying to make the decision, I'm really looking for which of the two can, can best help us in, in that sort of ongoing challenge.
I have an idea.
Like the council, a six-member council.
They would have ties again.
You'd have ties again. I'd like to withdraw my application in favor of Mr. Campbell with the intent that I will continue to be very involved, and hopefully I can be on an advisory committee or two, possibly on the council in the future. But he's qualified. I'm qualified. But there's other things I'm also interested in doing here, and go for it. So I'm out, and I, I don't know if you have to vote again if I withdraw.
Well, I have to be three to one, so we do have to extend the vote. I don't know, do we?
I think it's probably good for the.
Yes, yes. For the record, we do, we'll all be just, we had to win, which is just Catherine, so. Sorry?
Yeah.
It's for the record.
Yes.
Johnny Carson.
One of them, Tom Campbell.
So.
Get sworn in.
Before we adjourn the meeting, before Connie, well, Connie's already walking away, literally now, just metaphorically. Connie?
Yes.
I want to thank both you and, thank you. I want to thank both you and Tom. I, I wasn't kidding. I mean, I knew this was going to be challenging and difficult. And I would like to personally thank Connie for a moment of grace there and what she did. It's not what I had hoped she would do, and that's not what I expected her to do, and it's what she did. So I want to thank her for that. Perhaps that move is indicative of your skills in this area and how you might contribute in many ways going forward, and I hope you will. Tom, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
We have scheduled the agenda in such a way that you don't have to vote on anything tonight.
Notice that.
I do have to swear in, though.
We have the, we have the backup, backup agenda, which was the secret one we'll present now. No, but Leila has the, the duty now to swear you in, to join the council.
All right, well, I have some practice. Unfortunately. Ask you kindly to repeat after me. So I, Tom Campbell.
I, Tom Campbell.
Do solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
But I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Manzanita.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Manzanita.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faith, faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of city counselor.
Discharge the duties of city counselor.
Of the City of Manzanita.
Of the City of Manzanita.
And County of Tillamook.
And the County of Tillamook.
According to the best of my ability, so help me whoever, but.
It's the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You need to sign this now.
I am, we're almost there.
Thank you.
There you go.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting at nine fourteen PM.
I'll make a motion.
And a fast close. Thank you, everyone, very, very much.